We don't have any additional agenda items this evening. I would note that Agenda Item 5, the First Reading Ordinance for Traffic Coming on 600 Block of Boston Avenue, is rescheduled for another meeting. And on upcoming agendas, next Monday, the 19th, we'll have a presentation from the Commemoration Commission. We'll have a special session, resolution commenting on the site plan on Taco Bell, work session discussions of medical marijuana dispensaries, amendments to the noise ordinance, and a discussion of the RCN franchise agreement. Two nights later, on Wednesday, the 21st, in this room, there will be the election forum at 7:00. Then the following week, Monday through Wednesday, the council will be at the MML Fall Legislative Conference, so the City Council meeting will be on Thursday, October 29th. And I'll note that, among other things, we have the First Reading Ordinance, admitting chapter on snow and ice regulations, and we have a work session, discussion, on the library renovation proposal, where we'll come back to that after the last go-around we had with that. The following week, Tuesday, November 3rd, city election, polls are open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Following that, Monday, November 9th, we have a regular meeting with second reading ordinances on a number of items. And then the final meeting of this council, and the first meeting of the new council, will be Monday, November 16th. We'll now go to public comment on voting items, and so what I'll do is, I'll take any comments on items that we're voting on this evening. We have five of those, and I'll take them in turn. So I'd ask anybody who has a public comment on Agenda Item Number 1, which is the resolution regarding the Montgomery College Facilities Master Plan. If you have any comments, if you please make those now. If you come to the podium, identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Thanks.
Thank you. We're in Crystal, 7708 Tacoma Avenue on Block 69. We are adjacent to the college. We share property boundary as do nine other neighbors of mine. Thank you very much for this. I want to call your attention to a typo on page 3 that is, needs to be changed. The agreement between Montgomery College and the city, and historic Tacoma, and Montgomery County was 2002, not 2000, so that's a simple fix. I wanted to just talk about how, for a minute, how disappointing the process is, because we really don't know what they're going to do, and we may be coming before you again for help, because they're working on this now, and we'll barely have a chance to see it. And we're making, we're surmising what they're going to do, but there could be some unpleasant surprises, I certainly hope not. So, for the record, I also want to point out that I noticed, in looking at their updates, that they had, for example, proposed a building that will be partially three feet on New York Avenue. Now, New York Avenue faces our residences.
Three stories.
Three stories. Yes, I'm sorry. I don't know what I said. So, it's a combination of two and three. And I think three stories there, across from the houses, are really unacceptable, and I just want to call that attention to, call that to your attention, to the college's attention, that they really should not do that. They, they talk about perhaps putting some of it underground, that'd be great, but they're not promising, and that would be a concern. So, really, the buildings, new buildings on New York Avenue should be two stories. It's right across from our homes. And they also, also, I didn't see anything about, I'm just expressing some uncertainties here, they seem to talk about a renovation to Pavilions 1 and 2 on Block 69. What that means, we really just don't know yet, and it's a little worrying, because their renovations can actually be expansions, as we have seen. And so, we're hearing that they're not doing anything on Block 69, but when I, when I read some of this older stuff, it makes me wonder, and so I want to call those things to your attention. Block 69 is really our residential block, as most, well, some of you may not realize that, but it's the one that the college kind of went over into in the '70s, causing all the controversy. And so, really, those buildings should not be expanded at all. So, just want to call your attention to that, those two things, and thank you very much for this.
Thank you. Ms. Pierceall, has there been any resolution that you know of to the question whether this facilities master plan is subject to mandatory referral or not?
You know, I haven't had a chance to check with the county yet. I know the county felt very strong about it, but I just don't know where it is, and whether, how it's being resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else wish to comment on Agenda Item Number 1, on the Montgomery College Facilities Master Plan? Okay, I'll move to item, voting item number 2, which is Second Reading Ordinance, admitting code on stormwater management fee system. Any public comment on that one? Okay, Agenda Item 3, First Reading Ordinance Regarding Council Compensation. Nobody on that one? Agenda Item Number 4, Resolution Authorizing Execution of Contract for Services and Bus Shelter Agreement with Signal Outdoor Advertising. No takers on that one. And finally, Agenda Item Number 6, Resolution Providing for Appointment of Election Judges for the November 3rd City Election. Okay, we will now move to general public comments, and this is on anything that's on our work session agenda this evening, and anything not on our agenda at all.
Thank you so much for the time. My name is Chad Blaze, 236 Park Avenue. I'm representing my wife, Tara Blaze, and some of her business associates. Our focus, and it might be a better discussion next week, since it's on the agenda, but we're in the process of submitting an application for a medical cannabis dispensary in the city of Tacoma Park. And first thing we want to do is simply introduce ourselves. We're local, we're part of the community, we wanted to make sure that we avail ourselves questions, comments, concerns. There has been some churn, shall I say, in the system, questions that have surmised, or, assuming, bubbled up from some of the activities that we've made in trying to pursue certain steps as part of the application, namely, where this dispensary potentially could be. So, some real estate conversations and location. The second thing we wanted to address is simply that, since we are local, we're looking for some feedback on, and from the council, on potentially good spots to open a dispensary in this location, in District 20, and specifically Tacoma Park. And there's, as part of the application process, we have two options. We can name a very specific place, or we potentially can get some documentation from the council and other folks as part of the community, to say that they will work with us to find the right location that's supported by the community. That's something that I just wanted to plant a seed, and have you guys think about going into next week's session. And then lastly, you know, there's a personal connection that we have to this, and as someone that's grounded in the community with young children, as part of our business partners who also are grounded in the community with young children, we just wanted to make sure that you understood that. It's not presumptive of us talking about this now, because we know this is just an application process, but if there's a point in time when someone wins that application, and it is potentially us and our business partners, we're here to do the right thing. We want to make sure we work very closely with you and the collective community to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and establishing a business that's good with the community, and deliver some of those best practices and medicine that folks need so much. So, with that, just wanted to pause, see if there's any questions, see if there's any comments, and we'll probably be here next week to make sure that we hear some of the commentary on that topic that's on the docket on the 19th.
Thanks very much, I'm glad you came.
You're welcome. Thanks so much for having us.
Thank you for a bit of time. My name's Bob Bingman, 7502 Holly. I know that the city, that you all are wrapping up business for the year, but the city is looking ahead, and looking at parking in Tacoma Park, and I want to share a story I had with, that impacted myself and my partner this week. We live on Holly. You probably know that road was repaved this week, thank you very much. It is awesome. With the rain, the city posted a sign saying we could not park on Holly for a week, totally understandable. We moved our cars, the rain came, it got extended for another week. So we moved, being good residents, our cars off of Holly Avenue. I went Friday to get our two cars, which was parked two blocks from our house, and on our car were parking tickets and a tow notice. Now, that doesn't seem right to me. I've lived in Tacoma Park for 22 years. I never knew there was a 72-hour, "you have to move your car" law in this town, or you could be towed if somebody filed a complaint. Apparently, one of our neighbors filed a complaint, and we got two parking tickets and two threats to tow our cars. So, I want to make the council aware of that, and ask you to consider two things. First, when a community is impacted like us, like we were impacted when the city asked us to move our car, cut us some slack. Maybe let the police department know, let's not be enforcing the law to letter the law in that case. And then secondly, Councilmember Grimes sent me the survey that you, that the city has put together, which I did fill out today. As you look ahead on this, I really hope you think about that 72-hour requirement. I'm a good environmentalist. There are many, many, many weeks over the last 22 years where my car sits in the street for an entire week. I park it Sunday night, I take Metro to work, and I don't move that car at all. And is it fair, if I have a neighbor who's got a bone to pick with me, to file a complaint to get those tickets? So I hope that the council, moving forward, will take a look at, take a look at this. Happy to talk more. Last thing I just want to say, just really quickly, I know Councilmember Grimes is about to term off the council, and I just want to thank you, Seth. You've been a very engaged partner in the community, and I really appreciate your public service.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Holly Robertson. I live on Glen Side Drive in beautiful New Hampshire Gardens. We moved to this affordable slice of Tacoma Park about five years ago, and ever since, my family has invested significant time and energy to improve our home and our neighborhood, and to help out in our surrounding community. And like many of the families who are here to join me tonight, we relocated to this area over the past few years, because we were as much attracted to the good schools and green parks as we were to the promise of the purple line, and the near-term possibility of a more livable, more walkable, more connected community up there at the crossroads. This is why it's been so gutting to know that a drive-through restaurant, a single-story, single-use building, is going to be the first development proposed since the adoption of the sector plan just years ago, and on such a highly visible corner of the crossroads. My neighbors and I have been expressing our concerns about this type of development since January, when we learned about it. And the whole time, we've been told, "Don't worry. Don't worry, it will only be there for a few years. It will be an incremental development, and then the property manager will tear it down and build something else in about five years." Yet, there's a 20-year lease that the drive-through restaurant proposed, Taco Bell has signed with the property manager, and the property manager just told you guys, you know, a couple weeks ago, that they have no foreseeable redevelopment, redevelopment plans in the future. We watched for years up at the crossroads, while the state negotiated for the site of the current Tacoma Langley Transit Center, the previous Taco Bell, and a cost that, you know, tripled, and at a significant delay for a much-needed transit center in our area. It's not easy to, it is easy to drive up and down the crossroads, and down, up and down New Hampshire Avenue, to understand that drive-throughs, once they're there, they don't go away. We drive by 13 from my house to my kids' preschool in College Park. They're there, they're, they do great once they get there, but they're there to stay. We can do better than that. We've been told, "Don't worry, this Taco Bell is going to provide jobs, it's going to build to the lines and pay for a crosswalk." This could also be true of a Taco Bell without a drive-through. We could have better jobs that focus on an in-person service rather than an assembly line drive-through. We could build a bigger building, more fully built to the lines, with multiple stories, multiple uses, and we could still ask them to pay for a crosswalk if that state couldn't cop off the money. We have no proactive business solicitation program in this city, which is something that can hopefully come out of this. We're being told, "Don't bother worrying, New Hampshire Avenue is a six-lane automobile-dominated thoroughfare, and you'll never be able to safely cross." No one in our neighborhood, including our city council rep, feels safe crossing that street now, by foot. It makes no sense to us that the first new development years, a tone-setting decision should be a business that hinges with success on automobile traffic. Our crossroads has the highest rate of pedestrian accidents and fatalities in the state, and our neighbors feel that to be safe, they have to get in their car to go from our neighborhood to cross the, to go to a class at the rec center. We can do better.
Thank you.
I live at 7324 Glen Side Drive, and I apologize if I'm repeating anything.
And your name?
But, my name is Gretchen Kapusik.
Thank you.
I live in Ward 6. I have lived in Tacoma Park for 21 years. I currently work at Mark's Kitchen. I probably know what you all eat. I've worked in the restaurant industry almost exclusively since I was 14 years old. I've worked for privately-owned restaurants, corporate restaurants, catering services, and fraternities. I've worked at fast foods, sit-down restaurants, from casual to uber-fancy. I've managed, cooked, waited tables, cocktail waitresses, and bartended. I've baked bread, butchered meat, washed dishes, and taken out the trash. I know a little bit about the industry. As a resident living close by the Taco Bell location, I'm opposed to the drive-through as proposed. Quite frankly, I'm opposed to fast food as a rule, but other people's dietary choices are their own business. We have a sector plan in place, which is supposed to be pedestrian-friendly, yet we're saying yes to a business that says that drive-through is key to their business plan. In Ward 6, we already have trash problems. I live right next to Becca Lily Park, and despite the trash cans in the park, we often wake up to McDonald's trash in our front yard. Apparently, some people like to be near a park, and eat their food near a park, and just throw their stuff out the window. But mostly, I'd like to address the point of Taco Bell and Mui Brands providing jobs. The location is talking about providing about 20 jobs. My question is, are these 20, 40-hour-per-week, full-time positions? Mui Brands touts many benefits for their employees, shift managers, and management. If you've read any of the reviews by Mui employees or Glassdoor, or Glassdoor.com, you see that even their management and management track employees, management track employees are underwhelmed by their benefits, and the promises of benefits to be had. As a manager in a fast-food restaurant, I know that bonus promises tend to be the carrot on the stick, held out in front but not really attainable. So, the jobs they promise will probably be 30 hours or less per week, denying benefits, minimum wage, which will ensure that these new jobs will require people working them to work a second or third job, go without insurance, or pay the large premiums out of pocket, thank goodness, for Obamacare. The powerful restaurant lobby, which is predominantly financed by large fast-food corporations, has held the minimum wage at 1980s levels until just recently. These are really the jobs, are these the jobs that we want to provide for our citizens?
Thank you.
I have a few other moments, but my time's up, but I have copies for all of you. Thank you.
If you can hand them up here, we'll take them. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Brandon Butler, and I also live on Glen Side Drive in New Hampshire Gardens. And I moved here several years ago, and for several years, we've been listening to the city staff and area leaders, as they try to involve us in the shaping of our area's future through the creation of different vision documents and planning documents, you know, the new, new Ave, and the Holton Lane Improvement Vision, and the Sector Plan. And these are really inspiring documents. And my wife and I, you know, we read this stuff actually before we came to Tacoma Park, and we literally bought into that vision, right? We literally put our life savings into a home, and we decided we would commute a certain way, and we would put our children in certain schools, and so on, all because we, we were inspired in part by this idea of a vision for our part of town. And I want to read you a little bit of that vision, real quick, from the Tacoma Langley Crossroad Sector Plan. It says, "The Tacoma Langley Crossroads will be a transit-oriented, pedestrian-friendly community that celebrates and builds on the cultural diversity of the crossroads community. Smart growth and transit-oriented development support the integration of mixed land uses into communities as a critical component of achieving a better place to live. This plan reduces automobile dependency by locating a mix of uses convenient to homes and adjacent to transit, and by providing alternatives for walking, cycling, and transit within a physical environment that meets the community's needs." There's almost nothing in there that sounds consistent with taking the Taco Bell that was on the other corner and moving it down the street to this corner. That is, there's nothing better, it's literally the same. It's a Taco Bell, it's what it was before. It's not transit-oriented or pedestrian-oriented, it is car-oriented, it is a drive-through. So this is a huge lost opportunity to me. So there's a huge opportunity cost here. If, it's not a question of Taco Bell or nothing, it's a question of Taco Bell or something better, and that's literally what the plan asks for, something better, something walkable, a sense of place, a sense of community, and frankly, a bit of symbolism about this place. What does it mean to the city, right? This is the first chance to make a call, as a city council, about what this place means, what kind of a place is it going to be? Is it going to be the same, or is it going to be different? Is it going to be better? Is it going to try to aspire to something more? My concern is that this is all the wrong symbolism, right? It's a rare chance to say something, and what you're saying is, eh, okay, Taco Bell, again, move it down the street and it'll be fine. And I think that would be really disappointing. I hope that you'll seize this opportunity to say something a little more meaningful about our part of town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Margrita Calca, and I thank you very much for the opportunity for a public comment on the Taco Bell development. I live in Ward 6 on Merwood Drive, and I want to express my strong opposition to the proposed Taco Bell drive-through, especially the drive-through part at New Hampshire Avenue and Holton Lane. I live less than a 10-minute walk from the Aldi store, and I shop there regularly, so I'm very familiar with the site and many problems that it has even without a drive, new drive-through development. The proposed drive-through will be extremely hazardous for pedestrian safety at the crossroad intersection and at the Aldi parking lot, and will put many families with little kids in danger. We have heard before that this particular Aldi store is a very successful store, which comes with a lot of traffic, both within cars and on foot. The parking lot is already very chaotic, it's usually full, and cars have to cruise around for available parking spots. There's twice the foot traffic as of other stores, as people have to deposit quarters in shopping carts that they then retrieve afterwards, that they cross, cross the parking lot back and forth twice during each shopping trip. The proposed drive-through shares the same entry and exit points as the Aldi lot. In fact, it will dominate two of the three entry points. This will greatly aggravate traffic congestions and overall, overall chaos in the lot. My other huge concern is an environmental and social one. I appreciated councilmember students' questions about the environmental aspects of the Taco Bell building design in one of the previous sessions. However, I think what's at stake here is not whether this particular building has a green roof or a cool one, but what kind of food system we're, we're supporting when we give the go-ahead for yet one more fast-food giant in the area that's already more than oversaturated with fast-food options. Fast-food giants like Taco Bell are not just bad for human health, but also for the environment, society, and climate. A recent study published in the prestigious academic journal Nature clearly named global diets as a link between human and environmental health. In fact, the current commercial food system is one of the biggest, if not the biggest, contributors to climate change and other environmental crises. Crises burning huge amounts of fossil fuels, destroying tropical forests for beef and palm oil production, degrading landscapes, polluting water, air, and soil. Huge industrial corporations like Taco Bell, Mui, are adding to degradation of natural resources and the environment without actually producing any nourishing products that with a clear conscience can be called food. Instead, as Reacher has shown, they contribute to the current obesity epidemic in the U.S. by positioning their fast-food restaurants close to schools. This side would have at least 10 schools within a 1.5-mile radius, and in poorer neighborhoods such as crossroads, which are much higher risk adverse effects caused by poor food options like Taco Bell. There have been considerable local advances made for healthy food in the area, such as Crossroads Farmers Market, where SNAP benefits are doubled for the purchase of fresh and healthy food, and where local food vendors cook and serve food that has been grown locally and in season. We need your help in getting more healthy and nourishing food options like this into the Langley Crossroad area. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Alicia O'Brien. I live on Merwood Drive, and I'm a mom to three kids under the age of six. Thanks for your time today. As stated by many of my neighbors, there are numerous reasons that raise concerns about the proposed Taco Bell, and I agree with my neighbors on all of their points, and I'd like to talk a bit more about the public health concerns that I have as a mom. In the interest of time, I won't go through all the statistics about obesity, but I think everyone is aware of the obesity crisis in our country, and its impact on chronic diseases such as heart disease and type 2 diabetes. Public health leaders in federal, state, and local health agencies state that we have an epidemic, and what is so alarming is the childhood obesity epidemic. African and Ameri, African-American and Latino youths have substantially higher rates of obesity. The rate for African-Americans is 20%, Latinos 22%, and for Caucasians, the rate is 14%. I'm not suggesting that disallowing one fast-food restaurant will solve the crisis, but we can't ignore the influence nor the responsibility that we have to create a healthy and supportive environment for our kids. We know so much more now than we did even five years ago about the impact that poor nutrition has on our kids, and yet, another fast-food restaurant in the middle of 13 others within one mile, one mile, doesn't seem to support access to affordable and healthy food. We have to do something with the information that we have, and this is the time that we have, to make important planning decisions. Research has cited in the 2010 Dietary Guidelines has, has found that communities with a larger number of fast-food or quick-serve restaurants tend to have higher BMIs, body mass indexes. This is such a problem, because kids are eating out more. Every day, 33% of children and 41% of teens consume fast food. On the days they eat fast food, children eat an extra 126 calories, and teens consume an extra 310 calories. This is significant, as many health experts say, that just an extra 100 calories a day is a large reason why we have the obesity problem. The proposed Taco Bell is part of a global corporation that spent $779 million on advertising alone in 2013. To put this in perspective, the entire fruit and vegetable industry barely spent $100 million nationwide. They are set up to tempt overstretched and overworked folks and persuadable teens into their doors or through their drive-through for a high-calorie gordita crunch. This counters the work that you have done to support a healthier community. I applaud the mayor and all of you on the city council for the significant work you have done to create a culture at Tacoma Park that supports health. The Crossroad Farmers Market that was previously mentioned- The Crossroad Farmers Market that was previously mentioned that provides fresh fruits and vegetables at affordable prices so many would not have been able to access or afford. The new Capitol Bike Share Lane, community gardens, sidewalks, and my kid's personal favorite, our treasure of playgrounds. We value health in this community. Some have told me that public health is not a factor in planning decisions and that the county doesn't consider the type of food we want to feed our families. I hope that's not the case and I want to work with you to make sure that the health of our children in this community can be considered when we make planning decisions about future development. Sorry I went over. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Michael John Nikolicz from 7324 Glen Side Drive, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak about the Taco Bell. I'm not going to be as articulate as all the people who came before. But I do want to say that the traffic's already horrendous in this part of the neighborhood, especially during warm weather, and Fred knows very well about this and I'm sure that you've talked about it. So adding a drive-through that will attract more car traffic to the area is just, it's not what we want to see. As everybody has said, we have plenty of fast food joints in the area, we don't need more fast food, we definitely don't need another drive-through. That we would need a fast food taco place in an area that has so much Latino food is laughable. The sector plan and the new avenue visions that were so articulately talked about, this is just a step backwards from that, it's not a step towards it. Over the 20 years that we've lived in our place on Glen Side Drive, we've seen an upswing in the crossroads area, gradually, and I see this as a step backwards. We do not need more drive-throughs. This is from my 15-year-old daughter. She said, "Consider the future generations of the New Hampshire Gardens neighborhood. Traffic problems aside, our obesity rates are rising rapidly. If we just removed a source of this problem at the crossroads, why would we immediately reinstate another in its place?" We don't need another drive-through in the area, we don't need any more fast food.
Thank you. Other comments?
My name is Brian Rostron, I live at 8,000 Wildwood Drive. I live near Fred. And I've already sent my statement, but I've come here to reiterate certain important points. I oppose the approval of the current Taco Bell development plan at Holton Lane as presently proposed for the following reasons. A, the proposed development with a drive-through is inconsistent with the stated vision of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Sector Plan. And B, the franchisee Moye has not made reasonable efforts to make the proposal consistent with this vision. The sector plan states that the area, quote, "will be a transit-oriented pedestrian-friendly community. Smart growth and transit-oriented development support the integration of mixed land uses into communities as a critical component of achieving a better place to live. The plan reduces automobile dependency," unquote. I fail to see how an automobile-oriented drive-through is consistent with a transit-oriented, pedestrian-friendly, smart-growth, development practices designed to reduce automobile dependency that are specified by the sector plan. Now, as I said, I sent my statement, there are more points. For example, this area has the highest level of diabetes in Montgomery County, it's well established. You know, as a chronic disease epidemiologist, I'm forced to note that this is a diabetes hot zone. But I think ultimately, as important as all these points are, I think this ultimately comes down to planning and zoning. In all honesty, I don't see how anyone can really say that, again, an automobile drive-through with a fast food restaurant is consistent with the vision of the sector plan. I don't want to see how that's in dispute. Now, I suppose someone could say hypothetically that, okay, fine, there's a sector plan, but there is zoning and a drive-through is allowed in this area. Well, okay, I'll provisionally accept, I haven't looked into it, but okay, fine. The question then becomes, well, first of all, it's not entirely clear to me whether or not, just because a drive-through is allowed, that it has to be granted when requested. If so, it's very problematic for two reasons. First of all, that would give tremendous power to the applicant, more so than one would reasonably expect. Second, very specifically, the sector plan, as I understand it, was developed, in fact, largely by Prince George's County, specifically to deal with the alarming number of pedestrians being struck and killed by motorists. Moreover, Prince George's County has repeatedly demonstrated that they are capable and can reject proposals for fast food restaurants from, in some cases, more desirable companies like Chick-fil-A that have automobile drive-throughs. So again, for whatever reason, they have been able to deal with the zoning issues. Now, speaking personally, I am a pedestrian, I'm also disabled. Unlike many people, I cross University Boulevard and New Hampshire Avenue each and every day. That's how I get to work, that's how I get to the K-9 and K-6 to work. In all honesty, speaking without fear of qualification, we, the pedestrians of the area, are very sick and tired of being struck and killed by cars, okay? I don't think that needs to be qualified. There's a sector plan, many people have made life decisions based on the sector plan. I expect the city to reasonably follow the sector plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, my name is Vicki Booker, I'm with Hillwood Manor Apartments, I live at 1106 Lyndon Avenue. I'm one of three coordinators for the Hillwood Manor Tenant Association, and I have a statement from the association representing the tenants that we'd like to present to the council to consider in the work session later on in the council meeting. We represent the Hillwood Manor Tenant Association, we fully support Montgomery Housing Partnership's request for a five-year pilot to be used to leverage resources for the purchase and renovation of Hillwood Manor Apartments. The Hillwood Manor tenants met on March 12th of this year to organize and discuss that property owners expressed intent to sell the Hillwood Manor Apartments. At the next tenant meeting, which was the next week, March 19th, MHP attended and introduced themselves and expressed their interest in purchasing Hillwood Manor and answered our questions regarding their interest. As tenants, we were very impressed with MHP's response to our concerns and their willingness to answer all of our questions, so much so that we voted unanimously to support MHP as a prospective purchaser and sent a letter to MHP to express such support. Since that first meeting with MHP, we continue to have tenant meetings and successfully organized ourselves to form the Hillwood Manor Tenant Association. I just wanted to make two main points, and I have a copy of the letter for the council. MHP has been very proactive in communicating with the tenants. On April 16th, Robert Goldman, president of MHP, along with Artie Harris, the VP of Real Estate, Jim Miller, the asset manager for MHP, and some of the other MHP staff, gave a tour of their property at 7610 Maple Avenue. And we were very impressed with the quality of their work and kind of their mission for providing stable, affordable, and vibrant communities for Tacoma Park. That's my first point. My second point and last point is that the apartments of Hillwood Manor are very old, we have a host of problems. For example, plumbing and heating issues frequently have to be shut down for repair. And MHP actually met with us October 8th to discuss further kind of a strategy that they would have if they are able to get the pilot, which will allow them to provide some immediate flexibility to do immediate repairs to kind of get the development of the purchasing of the community going. So, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Excuse me. Ms. Booker, could you introduce the two persons who are with you?
Yes, my name is Steven Miles from 1214 Myrtle Avenue in Hillwood Manor, and I'd just like to thank the council for our meeting with us and helping us go through this process of having our apartments purchased by MHP.
I'm Latisha Lee, I'm also one of the coordinators, I'm a new coordinator. Yeah, I'm really excited about what they've brought forth so far. They've been, they seem to be very open about telling us what's going on and the problems kind of that they're having and, you know, trying to potentially buy it, and we're really hoping that it goes through because it looks very promising, the things that they're talking about, and they seem very honest, so I'm really excited about it.
Good, thank you. Any other comments?
Hello, my name is Alex Mendelson, I live on 7412 Cedar Avenue and I grew up here. I've lived in a number of places around here, I've lived off of Flower Avenue, now I live up on Erskine, I still live at 7412 Cedar Avenue, and, you know, families are sometimes. So, I guess just listening to public comments, since I live so close to where the proposed Taco Bell site is, and I have gone to that Aldi over the years, I would also, even though that's not what I'm here to address directly, urge the council to submit a resolution to disapprove the contract, not only because it's against transit-oriented development, and as a student of urban planning, I am fully aware that that's, drive-throughs are completely against that, but also because Taco Bell aims at a representation of a certain kind of ethnic food, which the Tacoma Langley Crossroads currently counts as one of its main assets, and you get a lot of traffic through that. So not only is it an advertisement, potential advertisement for the city of Tacoma Park, but it's a potential detractor from local businesses there. And I think we should promote our local businesses, especially those run by people of color. So I'm here to bring back to the council's attention perhaps, and back to other people in the audience's attention, Hampshire Towers, and I've had some conversations with councilmember Schultz, councilmember Grimes, councilmember Stewart regarding this. And I recently spoke with the property manager there who said that the issue had been resolved with Montgomery County. And I'm really, really, I would commend the council members for advocating for those tenants and for reducing the rate increase from 60% to 15%, but I'll urge that it shouldn't stop there. That 15% is, 15% rent increase is still a lot, and that some things can be done specifically with the Tacoma Park City Code to protect tenants from further rent increases. Specifically, I direct your attention to the provision...
I'll bring it up later.
6.20, okay, all right. Yeah, I guess that's, the work isn't over and we can protect our residents.
Thank you. Other comments?
Ms. Pierceall, 7708 Tacoma Avenue. In listening to this conversation, I just want to suggest that it might be productive to sit down and have a look at, in fact, it would have been good maybe before the sector plan went through, but it's not too late to look at the uses allowed in the sector plan. And one way that unacceptable uses are fine-tuned with a zone is through overlay zones, and I think you should talk with Gwen Wright or her staff to see if there, I don't know what can be done at this point, but there, I mean, reviewing the uses of a zone is very important. It's not just the height and the FAR and all of that, but it's the uses that go with a zone that you really need to fine-tune and make your own. And that's, you know, we have done that before in Tacoma Park and we should consider, you know, looking at that very strongly. Is our drive-throughs something that we want or should we have that in an overlay zone that really does not allow them to be there? It's just a thought, but that's a way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Good evening, my name is David Williams, I'm a visitor in your community this evening. I'm from Olympia, Washington, and I have a number of things in common with you all, in particular, my brother, the mayor. I'm visiting family here and I'm very proud and honored to be able to come to the council tonight and tell you how much it's meant to me and my family to have him representing people here in this community for the last 22 years. I was sad to hear that he's decided to move on and I'm really happy, the fact that he's decided, along with Jeff, to look at doing other things with his life. And I just thought, since I was here in town, nice to see you Susan, I saw you a couple of weeks ago in Seattle. I work with cities in the state of Washington, I work for the sister organization like the Maryland Municipal League, I work for the Association of Washington Cities, representing the 281 cities and 4.5 million people who live in cities in Washington in front of our state legislature. I've spent a lot of time as a city planner, working with cities. I never expected that my brother, 22 years ago, would enter city politics, and it's just been a very great pleasure to kind of follow his career, be able to share things from each coast as to what's going on. This is a beautiful, vibrant community, you do a lot of interesting things, people pay attention to what you do, and I just wanted to leave you because I was told I couldn't go over three minutes. And I don't always listen to what he tells me to do, but I wanted to leave you with a piece of advice that was given to me many years ago by someone who helped me really value what you all do. Politics is the art of satisfying the irritated without irritating the satisfied. And it's a fine balance, and the work that you all do and the work that in particular my brother has done is of great value and thank you.
Excuse me, before you leave, could you give us a little story about Bruce from the...
I'm afraid I don't have time for that. Although I do have, it looks like, 47 seconds.
Oh, we can fix that.
All the time you want.
And I think, I think what surprises me most, someone who has the passion that he has and someone who knows how to kind of stand up and say what he thinks, that he's been able to do that in a way that is really constructive and productive, and he's got strong opinions. I never thought he would be someone who could sit up there and kind of help balance a lot of different views and make things happen, and I think it's quite amazing that he's done that.
Thank you, but that wasn't what I had in mind.
He told me what I couldn't say. So anyway, good luck and brother, I look forward to seeing you more now that you're not going to be as busy.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move to council comments. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, David Williams' brother. I have a quick remarks about one thing that Ms. Pierceall mentioned a moment ago, it could fit in an agenda item, but why not say it now? I did have a conversation with Gwen Wright, the Montgomery County Planning Director, a number of months ago, who actually suggested that the city should consider asking the Montgomery County Council to create an overlay zone specifically for the New Ave, the extended New Hampshire Avenue and Tacoma Langley Crossroads, so that the city could better shape the kind of development that goes in there. Ms. Ludlow, Bob Bingaman, who was here, it looks like he's left, mentioned about the parking enforcement in the Hodges Heights neighborhood because of the road resurfacing on Holly that got extended. My understanding is that the city has suspended parking enforcement in certain cases in certain neighborhoods, including at my colleague Mr. Schultz's request when there has been utility work, I guess it is, in Ward 6. So I wonder about the possibility of extending those suspensions in the case of road resurfacing proactively without waiting for a council member request. So going forward, could you, it seems to be within your power to do that.
Yes, except that I think that I need to think through carefully about kind of the time period that's involved. The issue with the Ward 6, the Area 6 parking area, was the utility work... is going to be going on for a really long time. And so I think that makes a little bit of a difference, but it certainly has been instructive over the past week, hearing the complaints of folks on Holly Avenue. And I did meet with Mr. Bingleton. But I think that the, you know, we need to give more information out about the 72-hour rule, and I'm open to, to looking at handling that differently and discussing it with council, and see if there's a better approach.
Yeah, so I, I would differentiate the 72-hour question from the question of suspending enforcement in the case where there's extended work going on. I suppose they're related, but, you know, you could, anyway, I wanted to just bring that up and ask you to look into the suspending enforcement in future cases like this one until something more permanent gets resolved. The third and last thing I'll bring up is that I was extremely pleased to attend the Montgomery County Council meeting last Tuesday, to witness Montgomery County Council passing Bill 5214, which is called by some people the Healthy Lawns Act. It is a piece of legislation for Montgomery County that is directly modeled on and inspired by Tacoma Park's Safe Grow law that we enacted in 2014, 13. Unlike Tacoma Park, the vote wasn't unanimous. It was six to three, with all five of the county council members who represent Tacoma Park voting for. That is Councilmember Leventhal, who introduced it, Councilmember Mark Elrich, Hans Reimer, Tom Hucker, Nancy Florine, so the at-large is Buster District Representative, joined by Councilmember Nancy Navarro. The county law won't go into effect for individual homeowners until January 1st, 2018. That was a delay that was agreed to in order to get a larger vote. Frankly, that's politics. It would be a good idea, Councilmember Mail and I had drafted back in the spring an update to the city's Safe Grow law to, I'll call it solidify it and extend it in certain ways. It would be good to have that come before the council. I won't be up here for that, but in particular, add one thing to that update, which would be in alignment with the county's law, even though it won't have gone into effect yet. When the city does an update, still it would help avoid some confusion. And I'll just finish on this by recognizing that resident here, Paul Krostowski, who was extremely helpful, instrumental in Tacoma Park's development of a Safe Grow ordinance, also supplied some very skillful assistance to the Montgomery County Council in conceiving the county ordinance as well. So thank you.
And congratulations again to you and your colleagues for all your hard work. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to first congratulate Karen Marishow and her whole team of volunteers who put on an excellent second annual lifelong Tacoma Day event this last weekend. It was very well organized and well attended, and I compliment them on all that work. I also wanted to mention that today I went to the joint meeting of the Fed and Education Committees at Montgomery County. Just wanted to give you a quick update. They were talking about the continued operation of Piney Branch Pool. The committee met with members of, the staff members of the Recreation Department and Montgomery County Public Schools. All the council members, the six council members that were present at the, on the committees, were strongly supportive of keeping the Piney Branch Pool open on a continuing basis. They encouraged the Recreation Department and the public school staff to put a request in the budget this coming year that is sufficient for a long-term solution and not continue with the stopgap measures that have taken place over the past several years. They also, the council members also suggested that the Recreation Department and the public school staff look at various alternatives on how to meet the school expansion needs while at the same time providing a public swimming pool for the community. And they talked about various possibilities there that we don't need to go into tonight. And the other noteworthy comment was from the Recreation Department that expressed the desire that the city government worked with them on coming up with a plan for the city to actually manage the pool on into the future. And there was some discussion about the fact that that would have to come with funding. Obviously, that's, that's a whole nother topic. That's all. I thank you.
I just want to thank, okay, I got it. With Councilmember Siemens, thank Karen Marishow for a wonderful lifelong Tacoma Day. I was glad to be able to be here for part of it, and as the second annual lifelong Tacoma Day. It was getting bigger and very exciting, and I think one of the things that was absolutely terrific about it was the fact that the difference makers from the Tacoma Park Middle School were here helping out, volunteering, and all around the hallways. And it was a terrific day, and I thank all the staff that participated and all the volunteers. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
First, first the, Marlon.
Yes.
Of that, with regard to the 72-hour parking rule as it relates to city projects, a thought of a possible solution, and that is, is that when there is a city project or a public utility project that requires temporary displacements, that the city creates something like a guest pass that we already have, that we give two to each household that is in a parking district. But it would be a different pass that we would give to every, every car owner in the district or, or in the area of being of displacement, that they can put in their front windshield for the duration of the project, so that they can feel free to move their car wherever they have to. Sometimes the choices are limited, and the police will know then that it's not to be ticketed. And I think that way, it would be a very cheap solution administratively. I also wanted to compliment city staff, particularly Karen Marishow, on the lifelong Tacoma event. I spent a number of hours there, sat in on one of the workshops, ate the food, and talked to a ton of people. And the thing that really impressed me, above everything, was Karen's, and I'll give her the credit, but probably other credits due to some other people as well, ability to leverage volunteers. This place, the, the whole thing was almost completely run by people who were volunteering. And my conversation with Karen tells me, reminds me again that we do need, in this city, we need a paid volunteer coordinator, because I think we're really missing out on the power of volunteerism for people who wanted, who are capable and want to do things for the city, and, and, and there's a need for it. This could be the key thing that we could, to sort of bring the need and the resources together, so that, because without the volunteers, the staff would not have been able to pull this thing off. I want to mention two more things. On October's, in, in New Hampshire Gardens, where I live, on October 17th, the Tree Commission will be having a tree walk that will make us a one and a half hour walking circuit through that neighborhood, and everyone, the public is invited, who are interested in our canopies and our tree types and issues with trees. It'll be narrated with the people who know what they're talking about. When I look at a tree, I say, well, if it has acorns, it must be an oak, and that's about the, that and raking a lot of leaves is about all I know about trees. So I invite people to enjoy that. And fourth, I want to remind, mention to people that a new festival is coming to our city called the Diwali Mela Festival, Sunday, November 8th, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. And what it is, it's a, a, the Hindu festival that celebrates, is the festival of lights celebrated by Hindus that coincides with the Hindu New Year. Diwali celebrates new beginnings, the triumph of good over evil, and light over darkness. It's co-sponsored by the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority, the Hindu Temple of Metropolitan Washington, and the city of Tacoma Park. And it will be on New Hampshire Avenue at Hampshire Place, which, at 7505, it's, it's a large area adjacent to the IHOP restaurant. Think it's probably the most familiar landmark. So it's free, and there'll be lots of music, dances, and booths selling Indian-related stuff. And so this will be a first for the city to honor the very large number of people from the Indian subcontinent. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I would like to mention a couple of things. First, I would like to thank everyone who attended the cookout at 636 Houston on Thursday. A lot of residents turned out. This building has been a problem in the city for many years. Some of the things that the residents were complaining about is people sleeping in the hallways, drug dealing in the property. And so I continue to work with MHP to hopefully they will step up and buy this property, just like the issues at Hillwood Manor. I hope the issues at 636 Houston can be resolved with a new landlord. I want to give a special thanks to the Police Department, CHEER, Man Up, and the tenant organizers for helping. Police Department did a great job actually cooking the food, and I think residents ate every hot dog that was available. On another note, on October 22nd, there will be a candidate forum at Essex House. That is going to be sponsored by the Tenant Association and CHEER. The address is 7777 Maple Avenue, and it starts at 7:00 p.m. This is something that I came up with with CHEER. It gives tenants an opportunity to talk to their elected officials during the election and see what programming or what things that actual future council members and the future mayor will do for this population. So thank you.
I have just two quick items. First, I also wanted to thank all the people who worked on and put together the lifelong Tacoma event. And I was, I had my chance to interact with the difference makers. When Councilmember Smith and I wanted to sit down for a minute and talk about something in the chairs we sat in happened to be ones that they were picking up and taking back over to the middle school. So we were told that we had to get out of our chairs immediately, and I thought, wait a minute. And then they convinced me that they needed to take them back to the middle school. So I had interactions and know that they were here, and they were very effective at being good volunteers. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that I had a meeting with Washington Adventist University President, Waymouth Spence, last week, and it was a chance to try and make sure that there are good relationships going forward between the city and the university. And we talked about a number of things, and I think it's fairly evident that they are going forward with plans for a building on Maplewood Avenue that are much more in line with, with, what the neighborhood wants, what the residents want. And I think they have a better understanding of kind of how that process maybe got off track, and how they're working diligently to get it back on track and get some good results. So I hope that relationships going forward are smoother, and I got an agreement from President Spence that the, that he and the future mayor and other people should get together and meet at least every two months. And that was modeled on getting together with the Washington Adventist Hospital President, hopefully every month, and that had brought great benefit to both the hospital and the city, and that this would bring those benefits to the university and city relationship. So I think that's it for council comments. We'll turn to city managers' comments.
Thank you. I also wanted to give some kudos to Karen Marishow and her volunteers. There were many, many volunteers. I will say that Joyce Siemens was moving right along the whole time. She's, she's a force. I would also appreciate that there were many food donations from area restaurants for the event. Another kudo goes to another Karen, Karen McPherson. And I just wanted to let you know about something that she's doing, which has been very good. She is our children and teen librarian, and she's been partnering with the ESOL program at Tacoma Park Elementary School in a books and breakfast program that's funded by, partly by the Tacoma Foundation. And they model how to read aloud, how to evaluate books, the resource that our library has, and at each of their various meetings with the parents and students, they get a book, which is a nice thing, sometimes letter magnets and that kind of thing. And following up from the meeting of last week, there were several questions that were raised, and I'll briefly touch on them, and you can see what's written here in the page that I've handed out. The Police Community Relations RFP should be out by October 23rd, and we'll go back around with council before that goes out. We are working on the Safe Cam program. I'd still like to follow up with some council members to find out if that, if there's still some glitches. But one of the problems that we had was that some of the emails went to an unmanned email box by accident, and that's been corrected. There was a question about how many police stops for vehicles rolling through a stop sign resulted in a vehicle being searched. And we were able to get the information for the last year. There were over about 6,600 traffic stops. Of those searches were conducted on a total of 61 vehicles. And, so that's a very small number. It's thus not an excuse to try to stop somebody to search them. We are interested in looking at this as part of a number of different metrics about how our police interacts with the community and what's best practice, so that's something I anticipate seeing more about. There was a question last week on are there any profitable aquatic centers, as a fellow to the Piney Branch Pool question, and there are not. If you look at the cost of debt service utilities and program, program costs and operating costs, none of them make money. We are waiting to get some information about which ones cost less than others, but that's something that we don't have yet. Somewhat related to that and following up on the comment about the Piney Branch Pool is this October 15th, this week, the school system will be giving out information on their recommendations for addressing overcrowding at Piney Branch Elementary School. And so that's something that, once that is put out, we will share. There, there was also a question about recycling and trash containers for the Orchard Avenue Garden. We've only gotten a partial shipment in so far, but when the rest of the shipment comes in, we'll be able to place those. Please note, though, that this is a park and planning park, and so it's a little unusual that the city is providing these, these containers. State Highway, the last, is, will be having a meeting also on October 15th at the fire station from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to talk about Carroll Avenue Bridge, sidewalks between the bridge and Flower Avenue. The Tacoma Street Festival will try again on Sunday, the 18th. And so we're glad to see that that rained-out event has been rescheduled and that there's a road that they can set up on, which is an important point. As mentioned, we will be having more discussion of the medical marijuana dispensary topic next week. If you do look on the agenda package for next week, you'll find some links to a lot of state information on that, and some information that we've received from the county zoning officials. Finance Department has been renovated. You can go look in the window. They're still putting things away, but it's a strong improvement.
That's to be about the shortest construction project in the history of the city hall.
We, they moved. I was very pleased, and the, and the components are good, so we're pleased with that. What, did want to... What, did want to follow up. We will be, there was the action, or will be the action on the stormwater law. There will be representatives of Tacoma Park, Rockville, and Gaithersburg meeting with Montgomery County on November 10th to discuss our arrangement for mutual fees on, on stormwater. And a number of the council members and Jason and I will be attending the Municipal League Fall Legislative Conference, October 26th to 28th.
Councilmember Schultz, you have a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest a correction to the state highway meeting at the fire station.
Yes.
You mentioned that this is for the pedestrians, the sidewalks, pedestrian facilities from Carroll to Flower. My reading of the-
From the bridge to Flower.
It, yeah, I mean, from, I'm sorry, from, from the Carroll Avenue Bridge to Flower, but in fact, it's from the Carroll Avenue Bridge down to Garland.
Okay.
According to the state S H A website and the flyer that they also handed out.
Thank you.
Includes the re-signalization of the street signal of Flower and Carroll. So it mentions retaining walls and a bunch of other stuff. So that's not to be confused with the bridge project, which is a different S H A project.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you for that report. We don't have any minutes to adopt, so we will move to our first voting item this evening, which is a resolution regarding the Montgomery College Facilities Master Plan. Is anybody going to say anything about this, Ms. Grigsby or anybody else? Okay. Then I will turn to Councilmember Grimes. Do you want to introduce this?
Sure, I'd be pleased to move this resolution with the correction on page three of the year from 2000 to 2002.
And also with a correction in section three on that same page. The city asked the Fenton Avenue, remove the word "B."
Yes. So I'll move it with those two corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any council discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Ms. Rosalyn Grigsby for her assistance in drafting the various versions of this resolution, and to neighbors in North Tacoma, including Ms. Pierceall, who is here, and others with input into the resolution.
Any other council comments? Seeing not all those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Councilmember Mail is on a conference call and will be returning shortly. Next item is a second reading ordinance, submitting a code, Chapter 16.08 Stormwater Management Fee System. Would somebody like to move the ordinance?
Do we have to sit as the stormwater board for that?
Uh, we're changing the code, do we? I guess we do. Let's, let's move as the stormwater board, just to make sure. Would you like to move that?
I will move that.
Move by Councilmember Seaman, second by Councilmember Grimes, that we sit as the stormwater management board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now sitting as the stormwater management board. Would you like to also introduce the ordinance?
Yes, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Seaman, second by Councilmember Smith. This is a way to make sure that we can participate in this MOU discussion and hopefully at some point get payment of stormwater fees by entities, including the county and, and the state, and which will then trigger any potential federal payments. And this is something that we needed to clean up. Any council comments on this one? Okay, it's a second reading ordinance, so we'll need a roll call vote. The court, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We will now move to agenda item number three, which is first reading ordinance regarding council compensation. Would somebody like to move that?
To move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Smith, second by Councilmember Grimes. Any council discussion on this item? Councilmember Schultz.
I want to commend the commission that we assigned to advise and recommend to the council what the, what the council compensation should be for the next coming two terms. I think we do this every four years, am I not correct?
Mm-hmm.
But I think that, and I appreciate their hard work, but my, why I'm speaking now is that I think that we put too many constraints on the decision, the boundaries of decision or recommendations that the compensation committee can make by simply asking, among the men, many of them is to do a comparison of what is paid in comparable cities. And that's fine, that's, it's interesting information. But the truth of the matter is, is that until, I'm convinced that until we increase council compensation, we are going to continue to have a very sparse participation in elections, numbers of candidates in, in elections in, in the city. We have, as a city council, and others on the city council deserve most of the credit, done a lot of things to expand the, to ease the process, make it as easy as possible for people to register, and to expand the number of people who are able to vote. But the one area that we have not really made any progress on is getting, making, doing whatever we can do to boost the chances that we will actually have competitive races with, right, with, with competition. In the upcoming November 3rd election, there are seven offices, obviously. Each of us is up. Each office is, is open for balloting, but in only two of the races is there more than one candidate. And I'm not the first person, by any means, to, to note that this is unfortunate. And as a person who's running unopposed, you might think I've lost my mind thinking that I regret not having an opponent this year, but that the truth of the matter is, is that we all have to think a bit, to, to agree a bit larger than ourselves. And I really do think, notwithstanding a lot, some of the other constraints, that salaries that are paid, which are intended to be for part-time work, and the job is a part-time job, and we all know that when we come into the, to, to the idea of being elected, it, it's not sufficient to allow many, many people to even contemplate the possibility of running for office. And all of us who sit up here know people in our city who we think would be quite capable of being council members. So on that basis, I'm going to vote against this, 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 this first reading ordinance, because I think we're, we are missing the vote on council compensation.
Just a reminder that the council is free to kind of change those parameters that were adopted, but until the council does decide to want to change this, it would seem that following the adopted measures that previous council said was, was the policy is something that council needs to do. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to join my colleague, Councilmember Schultz, and point out that in the future, we should not allow the compensation committee to look at similar size when they are comparing Tacoma Park to other municipalities in Montgomery County or either the state of Maryland. Tacoma Park is unique. The stresses, the, the things that go on in the city, you can't just compare it by the number of people that live within a municipality. And I just do not think it's fair when the compensation, compensation committee looks at how to compensate council members, whether or not it's Hyattsville, or I'm not saying anything wrong about Hyattsville, but it's not Tacoma Park, and nor is College Park. We have residents that are very highly educated, and they expect a very different level of service than I would say other municipalities, not just in this region, but in the state of Maryland. And let's not forget the fact that we border the District of Columbia, which is trying to become a first-world city, is making things very different in how we not only deal with them, but Prince George's County, and even go so far as saying Northern Virginia when it comes to affordable housing. I mean, we are like the only city in the area that affordable housing is our business. So those are just some of the things that, you know, need to be discussed when we are looking at compensation for future council members. Yes, it is a part-time job, but it is not part-time work. Thank you, Mayor.
I hope you don't want anything from any D.C. council members in the near future. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to thank the Council Compensation Committee for the work they put into this. I know from past experience, when I was not on the council, I was on the compensation committee, and I know there's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of research that goes on to prepare these recommendations. I fully support the recommendations from this year's committee. And I hear Councilmember Schultz's disappointment that, that we haven't looked at a, a broader and fuller compensation of the council. But I, I'm thankful that we're not going to discuss that ourselves tonight. We may encourage the, a future compensation committee to look at that. From my experience in discussing that very topic in the past, it is, it is not a black and white issue. It is, uh, there is a strong concern that you want people who are very invested in the community and want, are, are representing the community because of their commitment to the city, not because it's a well-paying job. And there's a lot of debate that has gone on in the past, and I'm look forward to future debates on that subject, but tonight's not the night, so I support this. Thank you.
And I'll just point out that one additional item that this does take into account is the opportunity to opt, opt into the city-sponsored dependent care flexible spending account. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of this first reading ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, that passes five to two. Next up is agenda, item number four, which is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract for services and bus shelter agreement with Signal Outdoor Advertising. Would somebody like to move that?
To move. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, second by Councilmember Schultz. Council discussion? This is a renewal of a contract with, with some major changes, particularly dealing with maintenance. Okay? Councilmember Schultz.
I'd just like to say that we have a lot of these bus shelters that get maintained by Signal on New Hampshire Avenue and, and of course, many other streets in the city of Tacoma Park. I've been very unhappy for a long time with the quality of maintenance, but I think this new pol, this new contract is going to shore up a lot of those deficiencies and be more beneficial as a result to, to bus riders who live in, in my ward, as well as other wards, and also probably be more beneficial to the contractor as, as well, including one of the things is snow removal. They'll, they'll be taking responsibility for that. But I won't go into all of that and just tell, saying that this is, this is hopefully going to be an improvement, because I know, I'm not a bus rider, but I hear frequently from those who are, and the depth of frustration when they find that things are, glass is missing or broken, or the garbage hasn't been cleaned up, or benches have been, been moved, or whatever. It just, so we look forward to improvements.
Councilmember Smith.
Mayor, I just would like to thank staff for putting together this contract. The residents of Ward 5 are delighted that there will be bus shelters. I know the contract says there will be up to five, but I know there are space limitations, so there might be fewer than five. But as long as we give residents some bus shelters, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll move to agenda item number six, which is a resolution providing for appointment of election judges for the November 3rd election. Would somebody like to move that?
To move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Mail, second by Councilmember Siemens. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. That passes unanimously. We'll, we'll take a short break before we take up our two work session items. We'll, we'll take a short break before we take up our two work session items. And we're going to take up our first of two work session items. This first one is the discussion of the draft resolution commenting on the site plan application for Taco Bell. And if you wanna, if Mr. Osberg wants to introduce this item?
So, uh, my name is Eric Ossberg. I'm a planner here with the City of Tacoma Park in the Housing and Community Development Department. So I'll be presenting the site plan application, um, presentation this evening for the work session. I would like to point out that folks from, from Taco Bell are here again this evening with their computer as well, um, and they'd be happy to answer any questions, um, after my presentation, which should be, uh, fairly brief. Um, my presentation tonight is, um, really going to address essentially three things that I think have come up in, uh, past discussions as well as this evening. As far as the, sort of, what the site plan review is about, uh, the city's, the role of the city in that process, um, how this site plan application relates to the sector plan, the Tacoma Langley Crossroad Sector Plan that was discussed this evening, uh, many of the pedestrian improvements that are proposed in conjunction with the site plan application, as well as, um, what the zoning ordinance says about drive-through accessory uses, uh, which also came up quite a bit this evening in comment, as well as other correspondence received by the city over the past few weeks and months. Um, so with that in mind, I'd just like to sort of reiterate the, the, the city's role in the site plan approval process. The city has an opportunity to, uh, weigh in on site plan applications as part of, uh, Montgomery County Planning Board's review of, uh, the site plan application and can communicate with the planning board via council resolution. Um, and there was a resolution, uh, attached to the council, um, packet this evening, uh, and it had been revised earlier today. Um, and I believe, uh, folks have had a chance to review that, um, revised copy.
We, we got copies of that, were those available in the room as well?
I believe, um...
Okay, yes.
Yes, okay. And I believe they're online as well. Um, so, just as a review, um, and again, the, the folks from Taco Bell are here again this evening and presented a quite extensive overview of what they're proposing to do a few weeks ago, but here's the site. It's at the intersection of New Hampshire Avenue and Holton Lane on the northeastern quadrant. Um, this was a, a more recent, um, sort of site plan, uh, graphic provided by the applicant to, to really give a sense of, of, of how the site fits within the larger parking lot at the corner there and where the building is and the landscaping, um, and as well as a, a, one of the signs. So here you can see the building is quite close to the corner, uh, quite close to the intersection of New Hampshire Avenue and Holton Lane. Um, there's landscaping, um, on, all around and the drive-through is, uh, tucked on the back of the, of the property, um, with access to the parking lot. Couple of things to note here are some of the, uh, the new pedestrian walkways through the site as well as, um, cafe seating along Holton Lane, which you can sort of see these, these three, um, Xs at the bottom, which are, uh, tables and chairs. One thing to point out here, and this, this relates to some of the comments and, and concerns brought up earlier this evening, um, and in response to some of those concerns is the placement of a small, uh, sign, uh, at the drive, at the, um, existing entrance into the plaza along New Hampshire Avenue. And you can sort of see a cutout of what, what the sign looks like. It's about four feet tall, um, and it would go in a small planted area there directing folks to the Taco Bell drive-through. The intent there, um, when the applicant, uh, Taco Bell heard from the community about concerns with traffic on Holton Lane was to only direct folks with a sign, uh, to the drive-through at that location. So once they're going up New Hampshire Avenue, um, because they wouldn't necessarily see the drive-through as they're passing by the restaurant, they would see that sign to go in instead of turning onto Holton Lane, which was, um, definitely an existing concern for folks and, and potentially a future one. Some of the other, um, concerns and questions that were brought up in previous meetings were with regards...
Can I ask a question about the sign?
Yes.
I, I note that the sign is depicted here says a "drive-through." Is the expectation that patrons who do choose to enter the restaurant would use that same entrance, uh, and that sign would be directing them as well?
That's not, that's correct. It's, it was basically responding to a question in terms of when folks were coming along New Hampshire Avenue, noting, um, access point along New Hampshire Avenue. So yes, it's for both folks using the drive-through as well as those visiting the restaurant.
Thank you.
So in, uh, in response to some questions about how this site plan application fits within the larger vision of the Tacoma Langley Crossroad Sector Plan, um, one of the things I think is important to point out is why this is considered an interim use in terms of the long-term vision of the, of the area. Um, it's in part because of the way that the property, uh, exists today in terms of the lots, the lot layouts. Right now, this, and you can sort of see in this graphic, the, the, the black rectangle where the, the site is, is an existing recorded lot, which means that, uh, development can occur there up to a certain threshold, up to a certain amount, uh, actually without having to go through a site plan process at all, um, or a subdivision process, which is typically how lots are combined to create a larger development. What that means is, uh, an applicant who owned that property, who had, who had control over that property, could, uh, go to the Montgomery County Department of Permitting Services, apply for building permits and build something on that site. Uh, that process wouldn't be subject to planning board review or the city council's review. It's similar to if you own a lot, a residential lot in the city and you wanted to build a house, you could simply go and get building permits and do that. The kinds of things, there are certain triggers for when a project on a lot like this, uh, does require to go through that additional discretionary review, which we're, uh, going through this evening. Um, one, a couple of those triggers are density. So if you're building a certain amount or a certain height, that would trigger, uh, site plan review. There are other triggers throughout the process. One of them is the, uh, inclusion of a drive-through accessory use, which we'll talk a little bit more about later. Um, but just going back to that idea that this is, uh, a site plan application, it doesn't require the subdivision process, what that means is that, um, no dedications of right-of-way or easements are required, uh, through this process. And what that means is that in the master plan, in the city's master plan, and in the Tacoma Langley Crossroad Sector Plan, there is a requirement that a certain amount of roadway be dedicated, um, to fulfill that vision to the, uh, public use, so to the city or the state or the county. And, uh, because this process doesn't go through, because this application doesn't go through that process, there was concern about whether or not this development will preclude that long-term vision, whether, what is being proposed will allow for, um, the long-term vision of New Hampshire Avenue. And what was, uh, negotiated between the applicant and the Montgomery County Planning Department was, um, essentially allowing the building to sit far enough back from the property line so that those improvements along New Hampshire Avenue can be made, the building will not be in the way. At the same time, the building is close enough to the street that it's not, that it's still pedestrian-friendly in the sense that you can see it and access it and engage with it from the sidewalk on New Hampshire Avenue or the sidewalk on Holton Lane. And, uh, that relates back to the city's Holton Lane vision, which was developed in 2009, which, um, called for, recommended a building on that corner very close to the existing lot lines. So in this, in this case, it's been a, a, a process of citing the building in a place that both meets the long-term objectives, but also achieves that short-term goal of being close enough to the existing street that it has an interaction with the street.
And is there any kind of time limitation on interim uses?
Uh, no, there's no time limitation. I will, one, mention one other thing about why it's considered interim use, and again, that's because of the other lots on the site. If the lots, that Aldi, that the Aldi property sits, the Aldi store sits on as part of the larger property were to redevelop, um, many of those other properties would also require to go through a subdivision process because they aren't necessarily a recorded lot like this one. And so for a larger development to occur in other parts of that parking lot, um, the subdivision process would kick in and those right-of-way dedications and easements would kick in at that time. So that doesn't really answer your question about the time.
And I, I was just thinking about it in terms of whether the interim use was seen as something that would be, make it possible for property, any property owners, uh, in that area to do some, uh, improvements, um, before the purple line gets built and kind of built into that as the assumption that the purple line getting built and opening is some indeterminate time in the future?
There, there are, again, as I was mentioning earlier, because there are certain triggers for the site plan application process, um, property owners in the area are permitted a certain amount of, um, improvements or project that they could build on their sites without having to, um, just by getting permits, without having to go through this kind of review. So typically the trigger is density or height, um, or sometimes if there's a conditional use or something special like that. But, um, in this case, it's typically the size of the project that would, would trigger, um, sort of a more long-term or...
Thanks.
I, uh, the other thing I wanted to discuss, the second thing I wanted to discuss this evening are many of the proposed pedestrian improvements that are, um, coming with this site plan application. And many of these things in this list are a result of requests made by city staff as well as county staff, um, of, of kinds of things to consider or things to include in the, in the process. Um, and they're sort of listed in three general categories. The first is ADA accessibility. Um, one of the things that's happening as a result of this project is the upgrading of ramps at the corner of New Hampshire Avenue and Holton. Um, that's on the state highway of, of New Hampshire Avenue, as well as upgrading sidewalk on Holton Lane to bring it into ADA compliance, um, along the property fringe, so that's the city's right-of-way, as well as adding an ADA-compliant sidewalk and pedestrian path throughout the site, so that's internal to the site, um, accessing parking spaces and, uh, the building entrances. Some of the pedestrian circulation improvements, um, include adding signalization for the pedestrian crosswalk along New Hampshire Avenue on the north side of Holton Lane. Presently, um, if you look here right to the, to the left of the red square, uh, the crosswalk across New Hampshire Avenue, while it's striped for pedestrian crossing and there are ramps on both sides, there's no push button or ADA signal, um, for pedestrians to use there. And so one of the requests has been to actually signalize that crosswalk as a result of this project. One of the other things is to provide direct pedestrian access to the restaurant on both Holton Lane and New Hampshire Avenue's size, so two entrance points for pedestrians on both sides of this, on both sides of the building, facing the street, as well as increasing the width of sidewalk and internal circulation paths to six feet. Um, this was something that sort of relates to the urban design guidelines of the sector plan, which tries to promote, um, you know, multiple people walking next to each other, strollers, wheelchairs, that sort of thing, to give people enough space to feel comfortable moving about. One of the other, uh, additions is two crosswalks between the restaurant and the parking area, um, in areas where cars would naturally stop to ensure pedestrian safety. And then a few other things that have come out of conversations with, um, staff and the, and the Taco Bell folks, as well as, uh, that relate to some of the recommendations in the city's Holton Lane vision, are to provide cafe seating along Holton Lane to further activate the pedestrian environment. This is a south-facing, uh, south-facing building, and so that would be, uh, the expectation is that would be fairly active seating along Holton Lane and would, uh, work to, uh, enliven that part of the city, as well as locating building entrances on both Holton Lane and New Hampshire Avenue and providing additional windows, uh, to enhance the transparency between the street and the building. And I think this was discussed a little bit in Taco Bell's presentation a few weeks ago, as far as the more windows that you add to a building face on a street, the more, um, intimate the, the experience is between folks on the street and in the building, adds eyes on the street, so the sense of safety for folks walking on the sidewalk as well as light. The third thing I wanted to discuss this evening, um, which came up again earlier this evening and in comments to city staff and council, has been with regards to the drive-through. evening and in comments to city staff and council, has been with regards to the drive-through. So there are three sections of the zoning ordinance that deal with drive-through as an accessory use. The first is in Chapter 3, which is listed here at the top, which is the, basically the use standard. So a drive-through is what's considered a limited use, which means that in order to have, in order to build a drive-through, you must satisfy essentially a list of conditions. And these are some of those, those conditions. It has to be 100 feet from a residential or agricultural zone, can't be on a residential street, the drive-through aisle or window can't be between the building and the street, and site plan approval is required. So those are some of the primary, they're essentially binary. You either do it, or you know, your building can do it or it can't do it. In this case, those design standards are all achieved by the site plan application that has been submitted. There are some additional standards as relate to vehicle queuing, which means how the vehicles line up in the drive-through in Chapter 6, as well as several sort of design guidelines, which are in the Tacoma-Lanley Crossroads Sector Plan, design guidelines as far as where the drive-through can be, how it's screened so that you don't see it from the street with either fence or small plantings, and other elements of the building as well. And the final piece in the zoning ordinance that deals with drive-throughs is in Section 7, Chapter 7, which says that the planning board needs to make a finding that there is a need for this, this use. And I quoted the text here from that, from that section of the ordinance, basically says, "To approve a site plan for a restaurant with a drive-through, the planning board must also find that a need exists for the proposed use due to an insufficient number of similar uses presently serving existing population concentrations in the county, and the uses at the location proposed will not result in a multiplicity or saturation of similar uses in the same general neighborhood." As a result of this language in the zoning ordinance, a need study was performed by the applicant provided with their application, which is similar to the need study that is performed on, has been performed in the past on other applications with similar use. In fact, last week, the Montgomery County Planning Board approved a site plan for similar use that had provided this similar market assessment. And basically, the market area is defined by a four-minute driving distance from the site. With that in mind, you know, this language in the zoning ordinance is a little vague, doesn't really provide strict parameters on sort of what they're, what they're looking for. And as a result, planning staff at the county and folks at the city have suggested that there be a review in the future of this language to provide some sort of more clear parameters for the community, for applicants, and for staff who are reviewing this, to provide an objective measure of how to make this assessment. And with that in mind, there was one additional-
Just before you leave that section-
Yeah.
Just clarify again, so I'm sure I understand, that this language comes from Section 7.3.4.1.3 of-
The Montgomery County Zoning Ordinance, which is Chapter 59 of the Montgomery County Code.
It's the zoning ordinance rather than the sector plan?
Correct. These, all of these references are from the zoning ordinance. The Sector Plan deals with drive-throughs through its design guidelines primarily. There's a graphic depiction of how a drive-through should look and operate in an area like the Crossroads Sector Plan, and there are some specific guidelines written out. All of those guidelines have been essentially applied in this case in terms of how the drive-through is designed, how it's placed on the building.
Mr. Osberg-
Yes.
So the council packet from September 21st did include the site plan application, and it does include the text, "The applicant has hired Thomas Point Associates to conduct a needs analysis," and so on, and the analysis is submitted as part of the application. I didn't see it in our packet from September 21st, did I miss it?
No, there was, there was a substantial amount of material that's submitted as part of the site plan application, and then-
So why wasn't it submitted, why wasn't the needs analysis given to the council on September 21st, or today, and what else has, have we not been given?
There, there are several documents that are posted to the Montgomery County, what's it called, the Development Applications Information Center, I think.
And you believe they were not germane to our council discussion?
They, no, not at that time.
Could we, Ms. Ludlow, could we get copies of all the documents that are part of the submission, please?
Mr. Osberg, I believe all the documents are online, are they not, in the Montgomery County-
Correct.
-project that lists, you know, they're all PDFs. I know there's probably two dozen that are listed on the page that comes up-
And about which I see no reference in the background or given to the council.
The, there should be a link, a URL, I believe, on the front page of the MO.
Oh yes, there is, I'm sorry, you're right.
And that's, that's a link to this particular project on Montgomery County's site, where all of the documents that are provided to the county are, to the county planning department are uploaded to that site.
All right.
So one additional thing I was going to mention was that in the revision earlier today to the resolution that's included in the packet was just an omission of one piece of text, and the last, therefore be it for the resolve, that the, the language there refers to future applications. So that the, there is a suggestion there that the Montgomery County Planning Board and Montgomery County Council consider amending the text that is on this slide here to provide some, you know, more clear parameters on what their intent is in that language, because it is problematic.
And so the specific language is that those bodies should amend the text to include objective measures for making a finding that it exists, especially in historic districts and transient and oriented master plan and sector plan areas like Tacoma-Lanley Crossroads.
Correct. And with the addition of "on future applications."
Yeah, I think that-
Because it's, could take them some time to, to develop that, and I'm not sure exactly which direction they would like to go in that, with that regard. But I think it's something based on comments that we've heard, and based on the, the language itself, is something that the county would probably, it would be in the county's best interest to, to consider amending that text, not only for the applications here in Tacoma Park and the Crossroads District, but also in our historic district and other commercial districts in the city, but as a county as a whole, because it's not very clear.
If I might just, I just want to commend Mr. Osberg, because he has had, he's been raising this issue with the Montgomery County planning staff. They've not focused on it before, and they've had to do, kind of go back and really look at, at things because of that, because of the questioning about what is, what are the standards, what is the purpose, and, and at this point, I think they don't know.
Correct.
But what they, but given the status of this application, they would go forward with the language that they've got?
That's what they did last week.
So when you say this, that is what they did last week?
On a different application.
On a, on a different application, that also required the planning board make a finding for the need for a drive-through, a very similar, if not the same, market. The need study was performed and provided as justification for that need.
Were there any questions at the planning board meeting, did they?
I, I'm, I didn't review the, I'm not sure.
Can you or someone characterize the needs study that was done for this project, since none of us on this dais have seen it?
So as I, as I mentioned here, what the, the market, the need study basically does two things. It does a market analysis, an economic analysis, for a defined area, looking at the need for similar kinds of retail establishments, in this case, a quick-service restaurant, and outlines the sort of the gap in what is provided versus what, the opportunity to exist for that, that use. And in this case, it found that there, that the need did exist based on the available incomes of the population. And then it also takes a look at the four-minute driving distance to see how many other quick-service restaurants with a drive-through use exist. So it looks at the economic need, and it looks at similar kinds of uses within that, a defined area, geographic area.
So is there like a threshold of the number of similar restaurants within a four-mile radius?
Well, that's the problem with the way that-
It's not, they don't have one.
That's the problem with the way that the language is written in the zoning ordinance.
The language basically says, "Take a look at it."
The language says, "You have to show there aren't enough, but not too many." And it doesn't say what that means.
And this is, the need study is required to be provided by the applicant.
I don't think a need study is required, really.
They have to justify the need. In this case, they provided the study, and Ms. Silver may be able to provide some additional information. It's my understanding that the similar study is typically what had been performed under the old zoning ordinance, where this was a conditional use that went before a hearing examiner, which is a slightly different process than the planning board.
I understand. But it just seems to me that if anything is going to be biased in this process, a need study would be, that would be biased if it's done by, because obviously, the developer has already decided that there is a need for, in this case, they say a Taco Bell, so, and it has gone forward on the basis of its opinion that this would be a perfect location, because there's not whatever, so forth and so on. It seems to me that the need study, and this is getting a little off the subject here-
It's not.
Needs to be performed by the professional planning staff who can, and who can apply the calculations, rather than, than, rather than the applicant, because the applicant, it's self-evident that the applicant believes there's a need, or else they wouldn't be there. I mean, I'm not asking for your response, I'm just taking, stating what I think probably is the obvious. Thank you.
And I want to make sure at this point to see if Ms. Silver has anything she wants to say.
Yeah, I just, I thought I would add, in terms of the needs analysis, as was indicated, the standard that's in the code basically is very similar to what was in place for other types of uses that required a showing of need. And the gentleman who prepared the needs, and so basically what happens is, there's different ways in which you can do it. In this instance, there's actually some empirical evidence, because there actually was a Taco Bell down the street that actually was very busy, and there was a kind of a showing of need based upon the fact that that Taco Bell was there, and then it was removed, and obviously we're replacing it in the same general neighborhood. The gentleman who did the report, his name is Tom Flynn, he actually is someone who's done a lot of these reports in the county and around the area, both for the government as well as for private sector. And this, he's both an economist and a planner. He's got lots of great degrees from Harvard, American University, and Holy Cross. And what he does is, he does two things. He basically goes out and does a visual survey in terms of the surrounding area, and then he also uses basically facts and data from two sources. One is from, it's, it's an organization called Nielsen that does research in terms of certain areas of the county. They basically generate different areas in which, of a study, and also census information. So the information that Mr. Osberg was referring to is determined by this research organization that basically has looked at the population in a certain area, the number of businesses that are in that area, specifically looking at businesses that are restaurants, quick-service, just like this, and what the, basically what the, what the need is. So in this instance, he actually did two things. He looked at both a four-minute radius, or I'm sorry, a four-minute drive time, and there was a specific financial number that they came up with in terms of annual, so there was basically a $5.5 million annual deficit in terms of what folks were looking for and what there was not provided, if that makes sense.
It makes sense only, only insofar as, I'm not sure what the $5.5 million is.
It basically, what, what he does is, he looks at the businesses that are in the area compared to basically how folks are utilizing different businesses, and so there's, so let me back up.
So there's a $5.5 million deficit in potential expenditure for those types of services?
Yeah, yes. And then he also did it for, so that was kind of a conservative look. He also did a grander look, that was a seven-mile radius, to capture more businesses and all-
Seven minute?
Seven minute, yeah, so a little bit further. And that actually had a much larger unmet demand of about 47 million. And the reason why the, the big difference is that there's a greater population, but less businesses in that area. And so that, that's really where they came up with. So in this instance, we probably went above and beyond what we needed to do, but we figured there was a criteria, we were going to have someone take a look at it, so we would have some data to explain it.
Ms. Silver, did the need study differentiate the Taco Bell restaurant from the drive-through with the, the restaurant? In other words, there might have been a $5.5 million annual deficit, is that 3.5? Okay, you get the question.
Yeah, it's basically, there's a separate category that's for quick-service restaurant, that is in effect with drive-through. Quick-service restaurants are with drive-throughs.
So there's no, there's no differentiation of the impact from a restaurant with a drive-through from what would, whether you'd serve the needs of the community via a restaurant, without a drive-through? I'm talking about the community's needs rather than my company's needs, of course.
Sure. It's, you know, it goes to, the issue is kind of, I mean, that's actually a good question. It kind of goes to community needs and demand, and the question always is, is how do you discern community needs? And the way in which you can objectively determine kind of quantity that's out there is by looking at demand, and looking at what the demand is out there and what has not been served within that certain radius or drive time. And that's, that's how, in Montgomery County, it's done. I mean, if you look at kind of reports that have been done, you know, kind of forever, that's how, that's how these analyses are completed.
Okay.
Thanks.
So I'm, I'm wondering if, if it would be possible to get something from Park and Planning for us that, where they lay out kind of how they're dealing with this particular area, given that it's not as clear as it needs to be, it's kind of a transition, in a transition phase from how things were done under the old zoning code, and kind of, like, can they be instructive about how they were dealing with this instance that took place last week, so that we would have an idea of how they would be dealing with this one going forward? Because I think it's not quite clear to us how they will be doing this, given that there's not a clear process.
It's my understanding that they'll be doing the same thing that they did last week, so they will be using the same, they will be reviewing the same kinds of needs analysis in the same way.
Would it be possible, do you think, to get something in writing from them saying how they deal with this now?
Don't ask for that.
Yeah, we can request that, yes.
Yeah, I think, I actually think Mr. Osberg's been trying to get that, but we will work a little harder. We can say to council-
Before this, Mr. Osberg wanted it, now we won't. And, and we need it in order to comment on this. In order to provide clear direction on what goes into our resolution, so that we can give them what they need for the, for their process. And we need it next week, which means we need it this week.
Right.
That was the end of my presentation, actually.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I do have one question, which would go back to the previous slide. Yeah, I do have one question, which would go back to the previous slide. Next one back, I think. This is where you were talking about the interim aspect of uses. I know that, well, those of us who worked on the sector plan and tried to influence the decision-making around the zoning code, that property owners in the crossroads area were sensitive to the fact that there, a lot of the development they, they anticipated that they would probably do, they said they probably would not do it until the purple line was completed or virtually completed, which at that time, it still is, about a five-year horizon. And, and in one of those documents, that period of time is defined as the interim, the interim period. And during that period, it was stipulated that developers could build and expand the floor area of their existing commercial floor areas by up to 10,000 square feet without triggering the optional method for site plan review. And I think you and I have discussed that. I don't know which document's in, but I know that this was part of the reason that, that the various developers, the Saul Company, Stout and Teague, and, and others, said they could support the, the, the basis of, of the whole sector plan, because this would then allow them to continue to make some improvements during this five-year period without having to worry about triggering a whole avalanche of processes, you know, street rights, changes of rights of, street rights of way, and setbacks, and all this stuff that would be part of the sector plan, the transit-oriented development.
Basically, triggering requirements that would be based on the assumption of the purple line.
Exactly, yeah.
Prior to the purple line being there.
And so this project, the footprint's a little over 2,000 square feet, so obviously, it's not going to trigger that, and that sort of thing. And so to that extent, by definition in the, in the planning documents, it is an interim use by that definition. The same thing could happen on, say, the Saul Center property, if they, for example, wanted to open up a pad site or expand the, the old Safeway, say, another 9,000 square feet. They could do that without sort of bringing down the whole house of cards and requiring them to come up with a master plan for the whole 10-acre tract that Saul Center posts. It made a lot of sense, still does, but I think this is a component of, of the discussion that we're talking about here, that developers are sensitive to and are operating under. If I'm mistaken about that, I'd like to know, but I don't think I am.
It's in the zoning ordinance with relation to this, the CRT zone, which is the commercial residential town zone. You probably remember it from the sector plan conversation, because that zone came out of the sector plan process. The CRT zone was a new zone that was developed in conjunction with this process. And so while that is in the zoning ordinance, I believe it came out of that process, and that was why you're recalling it that way. And so, yes, there's, again, it goes back to why this, the triggers for site plan. There's, the way it's, the way it's written is, I think it's the greater of 10,000 square feet or one FAR would trigger all sorts of other things. And so, you know, that, the reason why it's the greater of is because it depends on how big your site is and that sort of thing.
And I think the, the knowledge of that helps explain how it is, a resident can sit here and say, "I'm completely baffled that we have a sector plan, and yet this, this kind of a business or, or structure can be built, and it doesn't seem to make any sense in relation to the, the vision of the sector plan." So hopefully, that's helpful to what we're, what we're talking about.
It's not, but thank you.
No, it's not up to us in a big way. Yeah.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a little off-topic, but I did just want to congratulate Taco Bell on their recent certification by the American Vegetarian Association as the first quick-service restaurant with menu, vegetarian menu items. Congratulations, that's all.
Coming from a vegetarian.
Vegan.
Vegan.
And you could work on that a little. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, is this an appropriate time to ask to go to the actual resolution, or if other folks had questions? Because I, I don't have any other questions.
Let's just make sure if there are any other kind of questions on what's been presented so far. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work on this by city staff. I want to propose an additional whereas clause that would acknowledge the concern of many residents regarding the additional drive-through in the area. The reason I'd like to add this additional whereas clause is because generally, we use the whereas clauses as the context for the conversation that's happening in the community. And there's acknowledgement here of the, you know, the jobs that MUI is talking about with Man Up, the pedestrian benefits and other things, but I also think we have heard from residents' concerns about the drive-through, and I think it would be good to acknowledge that here. It's also good, because it gives us the, the backdrop for why we have the new resolved statement. And I think it's also good, because we many times go back to these resolutions as, for history and as a record of our conversations. I don't exactly have all the wording here, I'd be happy to work on it with you, but I think city staff know what I'm talking about, so I don't know. The council needs more.
Would that include the, the currently informal needs assessment done by Ms. Robertson, looking at the number of restaurants by her count in the region, in the area, four-minute radius?
It possibly could. I wouldn't be necessarily opposed to that wording if we wanted to work on it. My, my thing is just, I would very much like to have an acknowledgement of the concerns that have been raised, so I'm fine with that addition.
I would like to see that included.
I, I would, we had earlier concerns about kind of who's doing the study, and I'm not questioning either the study that the developer had or Ms. Robertson's, but it's like, it, I feel like we're kind of getting into the same question of like-
Yeah, I will say, I will say that, that planning staff has done a count also, so we can certainly share the information.
Because I would, I would be comfortable with referencing that.
So in principle, we're going to include some numbers or references to numbers?
I'm fine adding numbers, and I would say going by the staff numbers that they use is fine with me. If there's huge discrepancy between what the staff found and the resident found, it would be nice to have a heads-up on that before next Monday, but I would imagine, hopefully, it's very similar.
Did you have anything else?
Nope, that was it for me.
Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, in regard to the, into what Councilmember Stewart just, just raised and regarded, the whereas, the reason this other language is in there, therefore, be it further resolved, the city appreciates the applicant's commitment to reduce litter in the area, et cetera. There's seven items there. I had, the, the language I had-
No, there's only six. Number two's missing.
You're right.
That track changes issue.
Okay.
I'll have to go back and figure out what I, there's a difference between what I proposed to be entered into this, therefore, and what ended up being staff's editing of it.
So you'll let us know what the missing item is?
Well, no, it's more than that. It was sort of being, being a little bit more, setting the city has expectations that the, that the applicant will, will do the following. I, I don't doubt that the applicant, if it gets this site plan approval, will, will in fact do it, but I'd like to make it, I wanted this language in here to make it public that this, these are the expectations. Even though these criteria, these elements are not aspects of the site plan review criteria, planning board can sort of say, well, you know, the hiring of local youth is not part of the process that we review, it, or that sort of thing. I know that, but the point is, is that it's important that we make it public in our resolution that these are matters of grave concern to the, to, to the residents and therefore the city of Tacoma Park. And that's why, and that helps Councilmember Stewart to, to reflect that we are at least acknowledging a lot of the, a lot of the concerns, and that's not all of them, but these are some of the major ones that residents have been talking to us. And in the same breath, I can also say, it also acknowledges that the effort that MUI has put in to this process in trying through the community meetings, various community meetings, to pay it, you know, to hold these meetings, which they're required to do, but to actually listen and be responsive to these things. And the absence of this stuff would, you know, doesn't, would fail to acknowledge MUI's interest in trying to be a, a good citizen of Ward 6 in the future if this project gets built. So it's, it's important.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I do recognize that there's a diversity of opinions in the community and up here, and I, I think that we all have one element in common, which is that while we might not agree on certain definitions and also interpretations, but on definitions of smart growth and concepts related to that, such as transit-oriented development, that there are certain measures that are within county code, zoning code, and so on. And I would like to, I suppose, I could call it a motion to amend, although we don't have something formally moved to amend, which I've written out, an additional whereas and resolved clause that I would ask my colleagues to consider for inclusion. It, it is a simple statement of facts here, and I'll read what I've written. Sorry, Mr. Dan Weber, I made one too few copies. What I've written is, whereas the property is zone CRT 2.5, mixed-use zoning designation with maximum floor area ratio of 2.5. Sorry, I won't define that for people who don't know. The applicant has proposed a single-use, single-story building and states, quote, "The maximum proposed floor area ratio of the project will be approximately 0.1," end quote. And then, be it further resolved, the city requests the planning board's careful evaluation whether the project's maximum proposed FAR floor area ratio of, quote, "approximately 0.1," unquote, suggests a design suitable for a CRT 2.5 zone site in a sector that prioritizes smart growth and transit-oriented development. So this is in character with the other amendments that have been requested here to request, not, not putting conditions on anything that the city, not putting conditions on an approval if we move forward with an approval, but rather putting in a request for clarifications and study by the planning board as part of their evaluation. So I, I put this forward, and I, I asked my council colleagues to agree to include this in the resolution.
I, that prompts me just to ask the question, I'll make it a rhetorical question at this point, of how we're going to approach the resolution next week. If we're adding resolve clauses, what are, if, if we're going to, if we can make it clear to the planning board, kind of if we have two categories of therefore's, and what I'm thinking about is, if, if they, if there's any question at the planning board about their need of a supermajority to go against anything that the city might say, kind of how some of these, how they would deal with some of these things, like the last resolve that we have in the revised draft before us, and how they might deal with the, be it further resolved, that Councilmember Grimes has just supplied, whether, kind of, how they, how they would deal with those as something that they could comply with in the near term or, or conditions of things. It seems like we've got different categories of fish in here.
I think that the, I think that that is a important thing to call out, and I, I would recommend that, that there be a position set that for the purposes of triggering a supermajority, here are the things versus other comments or-
Versus here, some other things that we want you to deal with.
That we care about, but it's not necessarily that we're saying would insist on triggering a supermajority issue. And so I'm not sure exactly the wording of that, but I think we need to be very clear in going to the planning board which position you're taking and which position you're kind of going to the mat on versus a point that you're making. So I-
Isn't, I'm just curious, though, isn't it clear when we say the city council of City Tacoma Park recommends approval of the proposed site plan? If we just say that and then we have a result?
There are no conditions.
Right.
If, if I may, I have in front of me-
Okay, I just, I was starting to hear, and I was just wondering if there were starting to be conditions, so that was my question.
Yeah, it's, it's the approve versus approve with conditions. Are there conditions?
Yeah. I don't, what I'm hearing is there aren't conditions, right?
Right. Yeah, if, if I may, I have in front of me Maryland Code 24202 land use code, and there are two clauses here, one, two-thirds majority vote and so on, for any action related to zoning, and then another one for any action related to land use planning within the city that's contrary to a resolution. If we make a request, then they're saying yes or no to that request. It's not contrary to our resolution. They simply consider it, and they dispose of the request however they want.
I just want to make sure we're clear in what we're putting in there, what our expectation is, so that they-
I am not suggesting something that would, condition that would create a supermajority condition. I'm not suggesting that.
That's very helpful.
And I, and I think that may be the case with some other things. We want to be clear what they are, even among ourselves, and if we can convey that to the planning board, it will be helpful with them in considering how, how they would be acting on our action.
That's right.
Councilmember May.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I want to separate, you know, three issues out here with this proposal. One is the jobs issue. The second one is who's actually the decision-maker in this space, and the third is vision. From the job space, if the council wants to make, take an action that requires or encourages all developers throughout the city or all business projects throughout the city to consider local jobs as a component of future projects as a consideration, not a requirement, something that council pays attention to every time we look at a project like the solar installer we talked about, we've talked with a few weeks ago. Totally happy to do that as a matter of policy. I think it's a good idea, as opposed to a one-off on a project-by-project basis. I didn't find anything associated with local jobs in this entire sector plan document. I could have missed it, but I couldn't find anything there, which is probably a miss from 2010. The second issue is, who is the decision-maker? The city, residents, the, whatever it is, county, state bodies have not set us up as the planning board. We are not the planning commission. We are not Poolsville or Rockville or Gaithersburg that has its own zone. We have this, this ability essentially to comment that triggers a supermajority. So we don't have to be planning experts on every last detail of this, although it certainly helps us advocate for our interests. So ultimately, we're not the decision-makers at the end of the day. I feel like we can make a recommendation, we can express a view, and then the planning commission can do with it what they, what they want to or what they have to, based on how many votes they need to do to take the action that they want to take. And the last one brings me to vision, which is that five years ago, the city council, city staff, with lots of work and public input, put together a planning document that literally shows this spot and doesn't show anything like a single-story drive-through fast-food restaurant in this location, and laid out a whole bunch of recommendations for this spot, this specific block, and I'm looking at the picture right here in the document, of which none of the criteria, none of the recommendations we described that we, we, previous councils spent painstaking hours going through, are met by this building. And, and I just don't think it, I think it's clear opposition for me. There's nothing, and it's, it's a great example of work that's done by a previous council that I can look at and I can say, "This project doesn't fit this, and I think we should-" this, and I think we should oppose it. The planning commission can go forth and do something different than what we recommend, but this vision of suggested development for this, this area was meant to be something very different. Units for seniors and special populations, lead gold certification on any proposed development, and so on, and so on. And I just don't think we should be moving forward on this project, or moving forward to, to support this project at this time, given that we've got a purple line that is becoming a reality. At this point, it is becoming a reality. It is not, it's not a question of, of, well, it's not going to happen, that's not, that's not going to be in our future. It's going to happen. And we've got a plan for what we want this area to look like, and we've got residents who are moving in based on this plan, and we're doing something that's completely contrary. It's a new building, a nice building for a business that I'm perfectly happy to patronize, as I do for other fast-food restaurants on, on this corridor, which is not this part of it, but other parts of it, walking distance from my house. But it's the antithesis of what we're trying to get done in this document. And, you know, for me, in the future, what I'd have staff do is just simply present to us, does a project meet or not meet what we're trying to define as the vision of a high-quality life with jobs and more housing on this corridor, and I, and I would just simply posit that the project is a no in all those respects. I would be perfectly happy to support a Taco Bell as a first story on, on any other business. I said that before on any other mixed-use, multi-story development. But I just, I just don't think we should be supporting those projects without a whole lot of conditions that I expect are, are unachievable by the, by the applicant. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I appreciate councilmember Mail's perspective. But, you know, I, I worked on beginnings of my service on the city council in 2009. I worked on all of these documents, attended meetings, the design guideline meetings, which involved mostly built around community input. That's, that's where it started. It was not a top-down, it was a bottom-up document, the, the design guidelines. The CRT zone and the zoning ordinance, which became operative or effective last, about 12 months ago, applied the CRT zone to this particular district, commercial district in all of Montgomery County, I believe, first. And then it was, as the ordinance was finally made operative, it was established in other elements of the, other areas of the county. It was applied here first because of the timing, in anticipation of the zoning rewrite being completed. And the, and the theory that if CRT could be made to work in an area like the crossroads area, then it could serve as a model for how it could be made to work across the, across the county and with similar levels of, of density. So we have a CRT zone here that does that, and it provides incentives for developers, density incentives for future developers, whoever they may be, to, to motivate them to actually do this stuff, recognizing that master plans sort of say that if you're going to do something, this is what you're, this is what, these are the parameters. But unfortunately, master plans and sector plans can't make anybody do anything. They can sit there and sort of keep the old shopping centers that date back to the 1920s and the 1930s for as long as they feel like the, the cows are still coming home. And there's a lot of rent being earned here and have big cash flows and all of that. So it's really frustrating. And so the, the, the master plan was conceived to anticipate the construction of the purple line, which all, you know, we came within a whisker of having a governor who decided that there wasn't going to be a purple line. So it looks like there is going to be one. And the, so what, what this boils down to is that the drive-through is not something that any resident, including anyone up here particularly, is enamored with. But obviously, it is an essential element to, to, to the developer. And for better or worse, the CRT, CRT, CRT zone, the master plan, the design guidelines are documents that are in place, and they all allow the Taco Bell to be built. The fact that it's a Taco Bell and not a Chipotle, or an Obo Pan, or 15 other different brands that we can all kind of, you know, smack our lips over in anticipation is not something that governments have any right to deal with. It's, it's the property owner's choice as to who they want to lease space to. We cannot affect the quality of the food that's served there, even though I would like to. I'd love to have a Five Guys burger and fries there, or my favorite-
Well, I wouldn't.
Roy Rogers chicken. There's just no, nothing better that you can get, far better than Popeyes and KFC.
But we don't get into that.
Well, we don't get into that, to be, to be, to keep on track here. This is the, the reality that we're dealing with here. Unfortunately, it seems like there's a, a big hole in the zoning ordinance that needs to be filled by a better-written definition of what constitutes needs, which it seems to be a vision or a wish in the zoning ordinance, but it doesn't have any measurable aspects to it. And we can't do anything about that now. So that's why this draft is written the way it is. So it may be easy to say that this doesn't meet the vision of the thing, but the, the draft plans allowed and planned for interim uses, and we've just talked about what the definition of interim uses is. And, and it's frustrating for, for all of us that the very first thing that should be built new since the Walgreens opened in April of 2010, 2011, and the Easy Storage before that, and then you go back a half a century probably before anything else was built around here, that, that, that this is the, the first serving on our plate, is a, a quick-serve restaurant as opposed to some, something else that we would all be, that many of us would find to be more appealing. I, I don't see, we, we can vote no all we want, but it's a little bit like spitting into the wind. The planning board has its criteria that are set, set in law. And I'm also very concerned that if we sort of arbitrarily say, well, we know all this, but we're going to vote no anyway, what does that kind of message send out to all the future developers in this area who look at the, the city and sort of say, well, you know, even if I follow the zoning ordinance, and I follow all these other things, and I cross all the Ts and dot the Is to meet the planning board's considerations, but this turns out that the city can decide arbitrarily and beyond regulation, that it just doesn't want us, why would I ever think of doing anything in, in and around Tacoma Park? So I don't want us to send that message out to, to development, because we're having a damn hard enough time right now trying to get anybody to think about developing anything. On the entire length of New Hampshire Avenue, the, we've got one developer who owns an important piece of real estate that wants to build another storage building, and another, another developer who's been talking for about four years about the possibility of building a laundromat, you know, wowee. Otherwise, there isn't anything on the horizon that's happening. And, you know, it's pretty damn discouraging right now, if you pardon my French, but I just, you know, I'm very, we're all very hopeful that all of these things can, can come, come about at some point in time, but by, you know, saying no to the very first thing that comes along since the sector plan gets built is, is, may have consequences that we, we don't, we, we may not all appreciate. So I just wanted to say that at this point. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just add a quick point on top of that. I, I agree with many of the sentiments that councilmember Schultz just expressed, but I think an interesting aspect of this that I think is worth noting is that I would characterize, and some people may disagree with my characterization, but I would characterize a lot of the conversations that have taken place over the years in, in this city and in other places around the area when potential development has been proposed, that people generally are looking for, in spite of transit-oriented development and smart growth and all of those principles, there have been a lot of reactions to things that say that they're looking for less dense growth rather than more dense growth. And I think in this instance, it's interesting to find that many people in the community are making the argument for going toward the, the vision of the sector plan, which is toward more dense growth in a transit-oriented development area. And so I think in some ways, that's a hopeful sign that people are getting past some of those past worries about density of growth and development in their backyards, and are looking for ways that, that vision that people have laid out in the sector plan can come to fruition. Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. I, I found councilmember Schultz's framing of the issue here to be very useful. My framing of it differs a bit, and I'm going to say what my framing is in regards to decision-making here by quoting a comment that was sent to the council by Sandra Pearson, who lives in the Pinecrest neighborhood, which is at the other end of New Hampshire Avenue in Tacoma Park. She writes in part, "I hear that 76, I hear that 76 people are against the proposal, and my question is, where do these 76 people live? Are they part of the Tacoma Langley area? Do the people who live in that area have a vote as to whether the business should be there?" Well, a lot of them have weighed in. She continues, "Are we now the power that be to say what is better for the people who live there?" Well, well, in fact, we are. We were elected to apply our judgments as residents concerned with the whole of the community, not just the neighborhoods that we personally live in, not just our wards. We're called upon to make judgments. We have, by contrast, a corporation that's located in San Antonio, Texas, that is seeking to make judgments about what is appropriate for our community. I don't question that. They can do that. So there's no, yeah, there's an issue with the definitions of need and so on being inexact by which the planning board is going to judge, but that's what they're appointed to do and confirmed by the county council to do, is apply their considered good judgment based on their personal backgrounds and their professional experiences to the problems at hand. And it's our responsibility to apply our end judgments in supplying comments to the planning board. What we do in the resolution is in part call out facts that we think are particularly salient to their decision-making process. That's what I've proposed to do in the clauses that I propose to add. That's what councilmember Stewart has done in the clauses that she has put in here. And that's what councilmember Schultz has done in, in his suggestions for revisions. So, you know, I, I think that we're on solid grounds to comment here, and I, I do hope that we will transmit to the planning board for their legitimate decision-making here, the views and the facts that are salient about smart growth in the community, about community perceptions about the need for quick-service restaurants with drive-throughs. And I will note that while the applicant says that the drive-through is essential to their application, that, as I noted previously, saying that there's no Plan B is sometimes, perhaps in this case, a bargaining tactic. It's saying, this is it, take it or leave it. But that's their concern and not mine. I represent the residents of Tacoma Park rather than applicants who wish to open a business here that, in my view, is completely incompatible with this site.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm a little confused on all these suggestions that have been proposed for inclusion. Are, are they, are they part of the thing now, or are, are they-
It's, if-
Nothing's been moved, nothing's been moved.
Well, this is a work session.
It's a work session, okay.
So-
So could we get some feedback, Eric, on your comments on these proposals that we have?
I think, I think what we would like to do is, is go ahead and assemble all of these comments into a document. If there's something that seems to be a problem from a professional standpoint, we would call your attention to that. But then you would have all of those whereas and resolve clauses for your consideration in the next session.
And I would certainly want to hear feedback, too, from the applicant on, on those changes.
And so if, if you all have any comments now, or if you want to provide us comments once there's that revised draft.
I think at this point, it's hard to provide comments, because I'm not quite clear on what they are, but we would be glad to-
Yeah, sure.
Provide comments on that.
Okay. So staff is going to assemble the additional items, including the ones that we haven't seen from councilmember Stewart, that she's been working on with staff, and councilmember Grimes, and of course, including the ones that are already in there in the revised, and they have this evening, that I believe councilmember Schultz provided.
Right. We'll go back to the language and double check it.
And that will be put together in a, in a coherent order with demarcation, if necessary, to make clear to us and to the planning board the kind of, the intent of some of these, and we'll take it up again next week as a voting item.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to support or oppose something when it's vapor.
Well, the council has the option not to comment.
Councilmember Schultz.
We, we deal with vapor all the time.
We do have medical marijuana next week.
Talk about vapor. I just wanted to say that I am really thrilled and just really so pleased to have the testimony from Ward 6 residents here tonight, who I've actually encouraged to, to come and encourage them to understand that being here, warm, warm body and, and warm body form makes a big difference. And whether we, they agree with me or not on, on all these sorts of things, I'm simply proud to be their neighbors and to be able to, to represent, represent them, because I think what, what was said here, the comments that were presented here tonight were pretty eloquent. So I just didn't want us to complete our discussion on this without my having the opportunity to say thank you.
And before, councilmember Mail, for what I hope is the last comment on this item, I also just want to remind that earlier we had said that we wanted to get that information in writing, if possible, from the planning board on that other language and how they're dealing with it and treating it. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wanted to just correct, and I know councilmember Schultz sometimes uses, is just talking, but the idea of rejecting or opposing the project is not arbitrary. It's based on what's written in this document and the plan and the vision that the city has set out through past work. I'd note that, for example, we talked about maybe two months ago, but maybe it was a little bit longer, a proposal from the owner of the Advanced Auto Parts building. They wanted to build a, a storage building there. Immediately, there was discussion, it wasn't a formal discussion across the council, it was, we're never going to allow them to do that. Why not? That's completely inconsistent with this plan, but if the business owner wants to build something, why, why would we stand in the way? Maybe a, a storage site is only an interim use. And so, and then the other piece that I wanted to correct is the sense that nothing's happening along the corridor. So we have the city staff's excellent work to negotiate a second story on top of a laundromat that will create office or other space, and solar panels on the roof of the building that is also configured to fit with the potential design of streetscaping and other uses of that corridor. We have the Gassini Shoes rebuild. We have the pharmacy, of course, that was built a number of years ago. This isn't a corridor with no development, and of course, it's also a corridor with a new bus transit station that is how many months from completion?
We were trying to figure that out today.
Could be like Silver Spring, but it doesn't have any concrete, so hopefully it's not.
For some reason, there's a, I, I heard something about a holdup on glass, so.
Glass, concrete, okay. Well, let's assume, let's hope-
Glass, concrete, okay. Well, let's assume, let's hope it's six months to two years from being done. It's really close. So this is, this is not a corridor with no activity. And I think the very signal that we want to send to developers, the signal I wish we were sending to developers, because I think I see where this is going, is that we don't really want fast-food restaurants with drive-throughs. We want fast-food restaurants. We want other restaurants. We want other businesses. We want local jobs. We want mixed use. We want housing. But we don't really want drive-throughs surrounded by parking lots and maybe vegetation that survives, maybe not. So that's, that's the actual signal that I think we should be sending to developers.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a-
You get the last word.
Question for Ms. Silver. A resident asked about the pay rates and the benefits that Taco Bell provides its employees and the culture, those type of things. Can you guys respond to that?
I guess I'll start, and then I'll let Mr. Lewis explain from the Taco Bell moi side. I think the first question was, and I think we talked a little bit about this last time, is the wages. And actually, Taco Bell pays their wages actually higher than what their, the new requirements that Montgomery County just passed are. In terms of, I think there was a question about full-time, in terms of employees, and the, Will can address it directly or he can confirm what I'm saying, but with the discussion with hiring locally is for full-time positions. I think that was the question that was asked.
And the number of those positions?
Full-time positions?
Yes.
As many as they can be built. So essentially, typically have so many employees during a certain portion of timeframe. So if full-time employees can fill up all those hours, full-time employees will be hired.
I think the question was full-time equivalence, total?
Yeah. What is the, normally in a, in a store that size, how many full-time employees would you have? Five, six, 10?
Again, it depends upon the market and how many employees would like to be full-time. So I mean, typically, you've got about 35 employees-
Right.
-in general.
So let me just say, from your last store right down the street, how many full-time employees did you have?
I'd have to double-check. I'd have to touch base with the actual division manager that's side to verify that.
And I'm not sure if we have the answer, and we can certainly get back to you. But I think just in general, I mean, in terms of hiring and discussions that we've had in terms of hiring locally, is that, that's a commitment. It obviously makes sense from lots of perspectives to hire locally. There's a tremendous amount of opportunity. For example, with students, students that are hired are not going to be able to work full-time, but there certainly are going to be others that do have the ability to work full-time. For example, the district manager, who unfortunately wasn't able to be here today, he actually started as a shift worker.
A team member.
Yeah, a team member. And he's now been with the company for 17 years. So this is somebody who made a career of it. Some folks will make a career of it and actually have this great ability for advancement in this company. Some will make, will basically utilize it as a way in which to make some income, to basically be able to get to that next level if you're a student, to hopefully pay for college or to have spending money, et cetera.
Okay.
Two points to add to that. He is going to be the division manager for this location amongst some of the others in the area, both Montgomery County and Prince George County. And he is also a vegetarian.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys. Thinking about this site, you know, it's important for the corridor to see new investments. You guys are an international brand. For future development, that is going to be very important. We want to show business owners that Tacoma Park is open for business. So I wanted to tell you guys thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one, one comment on the jobs. In an earlier presentation this past spring, I think you, this, the answer to the question was 30 to 50 jobs, depending on volume, whether that was, you know, just literal jobs, whether they were part-time or whatever, but that was the figure that I have been bandying about in my conversations with constituents. Am I possibly wrong about, about that? I mean, I realize we're talking about a range for, we're talking about a business that's going to be open seven days a week, from seven in the morning until two at night. So that's 18, 18 hours.
No, I think you're about, you're right. 30 to 50 jobs. But again, it goes to the question of whether they're working full-time-
Yeah.
-or whether they're part-time employees, whether they're high school students, college students that work in the summertime, or, or someone who's a parent looking to feed their children. So it's just, it's a matter of total timeframe.
And I also just wanted to say that I actually agree with Tim, Councilmember Mayo, on the symbolism of our, our, no matter how this thing comes out, we're sending a message that I think is going to be heard, that so that any developer coming around sniffing around our back door is going to be aware that this, well, he said it. I don't need to repeat it. So, thank you.
The only thing I was going to add is I'm sure someone from JBG is here, and as they've indicated, this is a very important first step for them as new owners of the shopping center. So we appreciate all of your comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. Thanks, staff. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll take up our last item for the evening.
Should be an easy one.
And we apologize to Mr. Harris for his needing to be here this late. And this is a discussion of a Montgomery Housing Partnership request for payment and move taxes agreement on Hillwood Manor at 1100 Linden Avenue. And we heard from the- We heard from representatives of the tenants association. Sure.
About the project or-
Do a quick introduction of the project.
Okay, great, great. Good afternoon, good evening. I'm Marty Harris with Montgomery Housing Partnership and also a resident of Tacoma Park and Kate Stewart's ward. I can walk home, so it wasn't too much of an inconvenience to be here. So thank you. So as you know about MHP, we're a 25-year-old private nonprofit based in Montgomery County, and our, our goal is three things. We, we develop affordable housing. We develop and create quality, affordable housing, provide support services to our residents, and those are like after-school programs, homework club programs. We have programs for adults. And also, we strengthen communities. We do community building, build leadership. So tonight, I'm talking about a property that we are happy to bring in front of you. It's Hillwood Manor. It's a property located on New Hampshire, right near East West Highway. And we've, Sligo Creek, we've been looking at that property on and off for five years. And we're, I have it under contract to purchase by December 1st. And the property is 70 years old and is in badly need of repair. It has existing building systems, and it's just very, very expensive to operate. It's mainly only one-bedroom apartments with a few two-bedrooms. It's a 96-unit property. So I'm here tonight to let you know that on the positive side, we have the property under contract. We have financing for the property. It's to close in December. However, we have a little shortfall in terms of some financing that we're hoping that a pilot from the city of Tacoma Park could fill. And you say, "Why do we need a pilot?" Well, a couple of things. This property has very high operating and maintenance expenses, and the pilot would help us offset some of those expenses. And you'll see, "How high are they?" Well, this property, just electric and gas bills in this property are about $200,000 a year. And that's just that. And then, and then the operation, the maintenance and rehab and maintenance costs in this property every year have been about $250,000 over the past few years. So it's over $450,000 per year is just in utilities and, and maintenance costs. And so, and the overall budget is about $8,000 a year. So it's a very, very expensive project to maintain just because of its age. So we're, we would like, we're asking for a five-year pilot, 100% pilot on this property. I know this is a large pilot to ask for, but it's because of the $8,000 a year expenses on this property. So that's one of the reasons why we want this pilot. And two is because we have a gap. We don't have it. We have a gap. We have, the total cost is $8.3 million to purchase it and do some deferred maintenance on the project. We have the cities, I mean, the counties committed 2.8 million. The state of Maryland has committed 1.5. And we have a nonprofit lender that's committed for 4.5. So our request is a full pilot for five years. That'll give us time to stabilize the property, to bring in a professional property management company to operate the property, to get it stabilized until we can go and fully rehab the property. So this property, we're going to do like we've done a lot of others in the past. We're going to buy it with acquisition financing, short-term financing, five-year financing. Over the first two years, we'll do deferred maintenance. There is fixed holes, fixed, reduced utility usage of the property. There are some water leaks. There is fixed roof. There's a lot of landscaping. There's upgrading a lot of some of those utilities until we can put new in. And then in year two, we'll go and we'll get architects and engineers. We'll design, do a redesign, a lot of those buildings. And then we'll get financing in place so that year four and five, we can then start construction, rehab of the building. So that's why we're asking for a five-year pilot that gives us enough time to, one, stabilize the building, get engineering and design, and go for permanent financing, which we'll do with tax credits, and then we'll go start construction. So we plan to put $60,000 to $70,000 into this building during the major rehab, which we do. And you could see many of our properties where we go in and put new building systems, new kitchens, new baths, new roofs.
And that's $60,000 to $70,000 per unit?
Per unit, per unit. And also, what this community has, it's somewhat isolated because it's across New Hampshire. It doesn't have a community center. It has no place for the residents to gather in the, you know, just to talk, have parties, have, you know, just talk about their. So one of the things we want to do is convert one of those basement boiler areas into a handicap-accessible community room, so that they have a place that they can call home when they come work, from home from work. And also, because it has 96 units, our goal is to also provide some support services to the residents, like, depending on what their needs are, it may not be an after-school homework club, or it may not be a preschool, but whatever the needs of the community, we go and survey once we get into the building and figure out what it is and provide those services to the residents. So that's our request, and I'm open to take as many questions as you'd have.
So is there anything that you can tell us? I understand that the five-year pilot is kind of to dovetail with the, with the period of time to stabilize and do renovation, and then you're going to go into permanent financing, hopefully in year six?
Yes.
Do you anticipate that you'd be coming back for an additional pilot in year six?
That's a good question. Right now, I don't know. I mean, but that's not the goal.
So it's essentially to, you're anticipating at the moment, the five-year pilot for the five-year financing for what you're trying to do to stabilize it and get it all shipshape?
That's right. Because I know we have other properties from you with longer pilots, but this is, this is to buy the property so that other people also put in the financing, the $8.3 million, and also get the property stabilized.
Okay.
But I also say that we've also financing $10,000 a unit in deferred maintenance. So it's not like we band-aid this building together until we refinance it. We have, in our budget, $10,000 per unit to correct some deferred maintenance issues and give the residents a safer, cleaner, well-maintained property.
Councilmember Smith?
Mr. Harris, thank you. I appreciate you coming this evening. Can you tell me, will there be energy efficiency things done to the building in this $10,000 initial allotment per unit, or will you wait to do major HVAC improvements, lighting improvements in year five or six?
That's a good question. Day one, we're going to focus on utilities. That's our main focus. And so we're going to do, day, we already talked to our property management company. We're going to go and do an assessment of every unit and figure out what's the need. Do they have low-flow toilets? Do they have low-flow aerators in their bathrooms or in their sinks? So we're going to reduce energy usage that way. We're going to go, Pepco has these programs about going in and do the lighting, so we're going to focus on that. We're going to focus on anything that's generating more electricity than, than normal or more gas usage than normal. We're going to do this bulk buying. Since, given we're a large organization, we're going to try to buy bulk buying of, of our gas and electric so that we can get a better rate. So the goal is to reduce expenses and reduce energy consumption and water consumption day one.
When you do the rehab, the major rehab in year five or six, will the tenants be left in place, or do you plan on moving a number of them out to some of your other buildings, then you can, you know, start work on those major things and then bring those people back so that they're not in place and having to go through all the construction while you guys are working?
Well, the good part about this is that it's a garden-style building, not like a high-rise building. So what we've typically done, been very successful in garden-style buildings, is that we will let some of the units become vacant. When we get close to at least one building worth of units become vacant, and they may be scattered, but then what we do is, we'll do one building at a time. So the people in that building will move over to buildings that are currently in use. We'll rehab that building that's, that we've made vacant, and we'll move those residents back. Sometimes, we've had to move people to a hotel for two, three weeks, but we move them back. But no one will be displaced in this whole process. And we had a meeting with the community the other day, and they said, "Well, what happens to me?" I said, "No. You, everyone in this building gets to stay in the project, right? You, this is your home. We're going to make it better. You deserve to stay." So our goal is to, everyone stays, eventually stays, but we may have to move some people either with other parts of the building for a short period of time, or maybe to a hotel for a few weeks while the unit is completed. But no one, the renovation will not be done with residents in place.
Okay, good. And my final question has to do with the rent structure of the building. Do you anticipate having a number of units at market, some at a percentage of the AMI? How will you guys put together the rental structure for the property?
Well, this is what we typically do, because we don't know who the residents are and what incomes they make today. So what we do is when we purchase, we, we proffer that we would keep 50% of the units affordable at 60% AMI, right? And then we go in day one, and we income-certify the residents and figure out who we have, right? And then we figure out who's at 30, who's at 40, and who's at 50. And so when we do our, our long-term rehab and go get in permanent financing, we typically do it with low-income housing tax credits, and we end up making lower income levels, right? So we guarantee that so many be residents at 30, so many at 40, so many at 50. But day one, we don't know who they, what they make, so we just proffer that at least 50% of the units will be affordable for families making 60% or less in AMI. But then later on, once we figure, figure out who they are, then we change the rules when we do permanent financing, but make them better. I mean, we'll make them lower so their rents, they'll be at lower rent levels, okay?
And I just would like to say, I appreciate the work that you guys have done at Tacoma Park and throughout the county. MHP is a great nonprofit landlord. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris, for coming out and for our phone conversation last week. I think he gave you a hard time on the phone, not about the pilot request, but about other issues that have come up recently regarding rental properties. I have a few questions for you, and then I want to mention some of that stuff. One concern that Councilmember Smith was starting to get at, there have been other buildings. I guess MHP uses equity management, and in the course of rehabilitation, there have been issues where tenants felt they were not being treated in a proper manner. I don't know that there's any answer here, but that's something that the city, as you probably know, has been very concerned about in the past with rehabilitations. Secondly, I really don't have any judgment about 100% versus some other level of the pilot. And I would ask the city manager and staff to do an evaluation of the appropriateness of 100%. I'm fine with it if you come up with that as a recommendation, or maybe one of my colleagues has done some kind of evaluation there. But so to be clear, I do support the pilot, and the question there is the level. There's a third item here, which is something that I'm embarrassed to say. It came as a surprise to me that when we've issued pilots in the city, that because of the rental conditions, the financing conditions, I should say, and the low-income housing tax credits that you alluded to, and I will thank former Councilmember Colleen Clay for educating me privately on some of these things, that, that the property owners do- some of these things, that the property owners do typically apply for the exemption from rent stabilization that is administratively granted according to city code. That's what, I don't know how long you've been at the meeting, but that's what someone who was here earlier and commented was talking about. That was Alex Mendelson, and he was referring to city code 620-03082, which grants an administrative exemption, administratively grants an exemption on application to an organization that owns a building that satisfies these low-income housing ratios. I don't know what the exact rules are. So, I would ask that when we do a resolution to grant this pilot, that while it's not required by city code, that we explicitly include in the resolution, in order to maintain transparency and accountability, this isn't you, this is us, on the city of Tacoma Park's part, whereas and resolve clause, just stating explicitly that the applicant for the pilot that we're granting will be eligible for an exemption from rent stabilization, and stating the term of that exemption from rent stabilization. Is there a problem with that?
The issue is that a pilot does not...
No, it doesn't. That's why I'm saying I'd like this in there, because we're issuing a pilot, but when they, we're issuing a pilot in recognition of the applicant's adherence to low-income housing ratios that enable them to apply for an exemption to rent stabilization. Is that not correct?
The exemption would be based on an agreement they have with another governmental entity that's...
Exactly. I want that in the resolution, is what I'm asking.
Will you have those in place on October 29th?
Well, you can, the resolution can say that we're granting the pilot with the knowledge that the applicant will likely be eligible. Put some words in there. I find it, I find it, I'm embarrassed that we have 20 buildings in Tacoma Park, plus 17 units, according to the research that Cheer did in cooperation with city staff and council colleague, that I didn't know about. And this, you know, came to light only because of the Hampshire Tower situation, which has nothing to do with Montgomery Housing Partnership. I'm saying that when we have, it's not a deviation from city policy, because it's there in city code.
We can add the language to the pilot.
I think it needs to be explicitly clear when we are giving exemptions to rent stabilization. Or when we're making agreements that create eligibility for exemptions.
The pilot agreement itself does not create an eligibility for an exemption from rent stabilization.
No, but it's associated with, okay, we're going around in circles.
We're going around in circles. My concern is that I cannot be as specific as I got the impression you wanted to be when I first heard what you said. But we can do something very generic.
I'd hope it will be as explicit that it can be, but stating that the, that associated ancillary, auxiliary agreements that's part, that are part of this packaging on behalf of the applicant will create likely eligibility for exemption from rent stabilization.
We can do that.
And, you know, I think all my colleagues have heard me say this, and some of them have said this themselves, that I personally would welcome a modification, although I won't be on the council, to take this up to city code to say that the council must explicitly, by affirmative action, grant an exemption to rent stabilization, just as we grant a pilot. I'm assuming that it would be almost automatically, but it would be an intentional action on behalf of the council, and it's an acceptance of responsibility by the council of the particular moment for granting an exemption from, really, something that is seen as a centerpiece to life in Tacoma Park, namely our rent stabilization law. So, once again, that's a request of the colleagues of mine who will remain on the council, really. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilmember Grimes, I appreciate your already starting to lobby the council, and I look forward to your continuing on that particular issue until it reaches the vote of the council.
And he might try and rope you into bringing Mr. Lovelace to council meetings when you come every week.
Mr. Harris, I thank you for coming tonight, and I really thank you for the past work
you and MHP have done in the neighborhood and in the city. I don't know if you followed all that that Councilmember Grimes was talking about?
Right. I gave him a hard time on the phone about these things.
I'm sure that you have, but I'm not sure that all the residents of Tacoma Park have followed that. It gets a little complicated sometimes. I think the bottom line is, I believe there's 96 units.
Correct.
That we're discussing tonight, and I think it's important for the community to understand whether or not those units are going to continue to be affordable units in the city, and whether the residents of that building are at jeopardy of having significant rent increases in the near term.
Correct. And what we did, when we met with maybe 15 of the residents two nights ago, I believe it was, and that was their question, will our, will we stay here and will our rents remain affordable? And we said, "Yes." And MHP follows the county voluntary rent guidelines. I mean, it's more than just voluntary, we just follow them, right? And our goal, is our mission, our mission is to keep properties affordable for the long term. And not just keep them affordable, but to provide quality affordable housing. I mean, we go in and we rehab, and you've seen it, Terry. And so, and then also, it's not just afford, we create, we create income limits that are, it's not just we will keep rents at a certain level, but we create income limits, so that we, when we do the permanent financing, we'll say 10% are at 30, you know, 40% are at 40. So, I mean, that's something different, and that's in addition to creating, you know, keeping the rents affordable, so...
I think, I think the fear that people have is that one of those percentages is at market rate, and that there may be none of the people living in the building at this time, or in the buildings, that would be able to pay market rate. And so, the question again goes back, are people gonna have to suffer from that?
No, not at all. Because pretty much, in our buildings, if you look at what we do, they're mostly, they're like 90% for, we, in order to, in order to follow for tax credits, whatever the state's goals are, that sometimes they say, in order to score high, you have to have at least 10% of market rate. But market, you know, market is just means it's not income-qualified. You could still charge the same rent, but we just, in order to score high and get the tax credits, sometimes we'll say 10% of market, but we don't charge market. It's just that the residents don't have to income-qualify for those 10% of the units. So, yes, we will keep them market, I mean, affordable, even newer residents that come to the building.
All right. I thank you, and I certainly support your application. Again, I'm interested to hear staff's recommendation on the level.
Right.
But I thank you. And again, I thank you and MHP for all the work that you do in this community.
And we thank you for your support. Thank you.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for coming out tonight. I'm happy to support the project. My questions are both to city staff, and some of them, I hope, are follow-up questions rather than things we try to answer tonight. But a few things for you, going back to the beginning of the discussion, I think it was Mayor Williams, but why five years instead of 10? And the question that I'm really interested in, and Councilmember Smith brought this up as well, is, you know, if that next period is when the major construction will occur, you know, can the city, for example, if it was a 10-year pilot exemption instead of a five-year, you know, give the signal that, you know, we really want that renovation to be about making sure units are individually metered, or making sure that it has as much energy efficiency as possible? So, not that this doesn't have to overly complicate the proposal before us today, but I'm just thinking about how even, you know, the city council giving even more advanced signals for something like a 10-year pilot exemption instead of a five-year could help with financing the kinds of renovations that might create, you know, lower bills for residents, more sustainable buildings in the future.
Well, Tim, more is always better. That would be great to have, you know, if, if in your heart you would give a 10-year pilot, that'd be great. So, we will likely come back, but the goal is, right now, is to, let's get in, see what the property really needs, right? And the signal, if you want to signal by 10, that's great. You know, it would also signal to the lenders when we go again, you know, that, hey, Tacoma Park is committed to this property and this project. I just want it to be, come in being reasonable, and also giving, I live in Tacoma Park, you know. And so, and, but I appreciate you saying that, and if, in your heart, as a council, you want to agree to 10, we would more than be happy to...
Yeah, I mean, one, I'm happy to take staff's recommendation, this, but one way to do it as well is to just simply add a whereas clause, whereas we expect that within five years, you know, we may see a new application and be interested in receiving that application for a pilot exemption associated with renovations that would also, you know, like, some of the criteria of the things we're particularly interested in seeing in renovations. So, that's sort of a way to give a signal in the future without actually committing to the 10-year. But I'm also, again, interested in staff recommendations on level, but although I think I don't, I personally support the 100% five-year, but duration of the exemption. The rest, my apologies, are mostly questions directed at staff or comments directed at staff. County property taxes, are county property taxes also part of a pilot exemption, or, Mr. Harris?
On this deal, the county is providing the 2.8 million for the project, and they're also capping the current taxes on the property going forward.
Capping in what sense, like...
I mean, there no, would be no property tax increases on county taxes.
So, whatever it is today?
Whatever it is today, it stays there going forward.
For how many years?
Well, that's indefinitely. I mean, right now, everything is based on this five-year program, but the county knows they're gonna, coming back to the table, their money that they're having in the project will likely stay on the project going forward, so this is their long-term commitment to the project.
Okay, thanks. Comment for city staff, sometimes we talk about a pilot, and sometimes we talk about a pilot exemption or a pilot agreement, and I think it's an exemption, right, from a payment in lieu of taxes, is what pilot is abbreviated for, and so then, we talk about pilot exemptions.
Well, it's a, it's a payment in lieu of taxes. So, it's not an exemption, it's...
There's no payment being made.
It's a payment of zero.
Right.
It's the way it's phrased in the state law. So, it is misleading, and the state law references both an exemption following the phrase pilot in lieu, or payment in lieu of taxes. So, it's very confusing.
So, I understand where maybe...
But we can try to be clear.
I think for the public materials, and this document uses the phrase pilot exemption, I'm looking at it right here. So, if we use that more often, it makes it more clear that we're talking about exemption from paying something, which is effectively what this is. I would love, Mr. Harris, and city staff as well, this question has come up a number of times over the years, sort of a picture of the availability of affordable housing of different tiers in Tacoma Park versus the rest of the county, and getting a better understanding of our supply versus regional supply. And I say that in specifically interested in, and, Mr. Harris, this also applies to your organization, is a picture's worth a thousand words. So, the sort of maps or visualizations that could effectively convey the supply of housing in Tacoma Park, or trends in supply in Tacoma Park versus nearby areas in the county, or the county as a whole, that sort of basic information would really be helpful. It's helpful to tell a story to regional leaders, it's helpful to tell a story to constituents who want to understand, or who don't even, who just don't even understand these issues, trying to convey a picture of, you know, the ways that Tacoma Park tries to maintain a, you know, a diverse, integrated community.
So, I know that the planning staff is, that's one of the things Gwen Wright is doing now, they're putting, I think they've got a grant to come up with, look at the housing needs and the housing stock in the county. And so, I think that that study you're talking about, I mean, a more detailed study is being done right now, but we can, we can look back at, and I can provide you what we have and share it with the staff.
We have some information, but I'd have to look and see what can be pulled together simply.
Thanks. The information is great, it's just the real, the real key thing is that the pictures are telling a story.
If you're so inclined this evening, if you check the Montgomery County Department of Housing and Community Affairs, in their, it's like a reports or section on their website, they go through and periodically do a survey of affordable, or housing properties throughout the county. And they'll look at turnover, vacancy rates, average rents, the size of the units, the makeup of them, et cetera. It's not comprehensive, but it does include, it's not comprehensive in the sense that it does not include smaller properties. It focuses on the larger properties, because that's where they can get the information. And it breaks it out by Silver Spring, Tacoma Park, Rockville, Atherspring, et cetera.
Could you just send me the, if there's a more, if I'll just find it from that page, and that's fine.
I will see if I can find it.
If it's a subset, that'd be great. And my last two comments, again, to city staff, my apologies, are, my sense is that this is a great program that has been important in the city for years, the idea of granting pilot exemptions for specific purposes. And I think it's an appropriate thing for us to have a policy discussion on. So, for example, I noticed the projected level of exemptions over the next seven years or 10 years of budget. So, you know, for example, the council setting a goal of having at least $100,000 per year of exemptions that we're providing, you know, provided they meet sort of the criteria of what we're trying to generate in terms of housing and renovating housing and keeping it, you know, keeping it in the highest quality in terms of places to live. But frankly, if this is an effective program, is an effective way to provide assistance to people, so in this case, it's, you know, just using the numbers of the expected cost of this to the city, it's approximately $2,000 in a, you know, subsidy in some form to the, per unit, right? So, I mean, whether $100,000 is the right amount, or $200,000, or $500,000, I mean, it would really be helpful to know if this is an effective program for how we maintain a stock of really well-maintained and modern, in terms of, you know, energy efficiency and other provisions, housing. We should, we should do that, because having a policy like that is itself a signal to MHP and others of what, of how to build projects into the future and what we would be looking for. So, I mean, I would really, I think that, my sense is this is an important program, and if there's a way that we can grow it, I'm certainly willing to think about other things that are part of, parts of our budget, that I'm willing to shrink to make more of this possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you for coming here, Arden. I am, of course, completely in support of your request. I would, several questions. My first question is, are the units individually metered at the present time?
No, it's, they're master-metered, but when we do the major rehab, we'll make them individually metered. It's founded, if they're individually metered, the residents are more actively controlling how much energy is used, yes.
Okay. So, yeah, okay, that's just, it's curious, because then you also told us that the units are heated by steam radiators.
Right.
The original radiators that were put into the building when they were built in 1944.
Correct. It's the same system, yes.
Yeah. Which is, from my own experience of living in a house, or remodeling a house with steam radiators, I know how troublesome.
That's right.
They, and also dangerous they can be.
And no air conditioning, which, that's, I mean, that's one of the things that we think it's important for residents to have.
Sure, sure, yeah. One of the, one thing is that the interim financing is a total of 8.3 million.
Correct.
Which is to cover you for the purchase and unit renovations for the first few years of your ownership, until you replace it with permanent financing.
Correct.
The pilot over the first five years is estimated at about $200,000 in terms of the fiscal impact on the city's budget. And, Ms. Liddell, help me make sure, to make sure I'm comparing apples and apples here, but that works out to about 2.4% of the total financing. And you had said to me that in order to get this financing, the state really expects the municipality to have some skin in the game.
Correct.
Which makes all the sense in the world. And we both know that doing a pilot is about the only skin that we have available to put into the game, other than just going over there and writing you a check, you know, as a grant of something of that nature. So, when you think about it, it's a very small piece of the whole puzzle, and my impression is that it's the least we can, we can do. And I'm not adverse to the idea of indicating our interest in extending a pilot... And I'm not adverse to the idea of our, indicating our interest in extending a pilot beyond five years, but that, of course, would be ultimately the decision of a future city council, that we really cannot force upon a future city council at this point in time, but it would be helpful to indicate that in our resolution, if this is the way we go. I would comment that the county's diver, or capping property taxes, I think we have an example of that, the Washington McLachlan property, where there's a half, about maybe a dozen dwelling units that have received some sort of tax diversion.
Yeah, I don't know that that's a good example.
Yeah, but it...
The county administration's actually looking into the, whether that tax exemption should be sustained.
Right.
Well, yeah, they should be, but, I mean, in this case, it would be not questionable. I mean, this would be a case where such a diversion would make sense, and so there is precedent for that. Bad, as bad as the precedent is. And in regard to Councilmember Seaman's question, in light of the crazy situation that happened at Hampshire Towers, which I'm sure you, you have some familiarity with, the problem was, was that rents had been held back for so many years for lots of reasons, that when the renovations were completed, the new property owner wanted to bring everything up to the AMI percentage minimums or maximums, and that turned out, because property, rents had been retarded, to be some gigantic percentage increases. The contrast here is that the current owner of the, of Hillwood Manor Apartments has tried to keep the rents as pos, as high as you could under rent stabilization, and in fact, even went so far as to exceed those, those limits. So I think this is not the same, not the same situation, where it's, it's not likely to result in sudden increases in rents, as you are, have already said.
Correct.
So these cases are contrasts, not, not similarities. The only, last question I have is that, do you anticipate that you're going to want an exemption from rent stabilization, or is it too early for you to predict?
Well, once we own the property, we will apply for, we will apply, apply for an exemption because of a couple of reasons. One is our, the lenders prefer that, and two is that so that we won't be under two different regulations, right? You know, so we are gonna be with the counties, we have to sign the county's voluntary rent guidelines, that, so, so it makes it very hard. I think it was one of the reasons why this was written into the regulation, this 6.20.030, was because we are following the county rent guidelines, and so, well, it would be very, it would be punitive, we felt, if one year your regulation said you can raise it 1%, but then the county said 3%, and then the next year the counties said 1%, and yours said 3%, we will be, you know, we could get caught in either going low-low, right? I mean, so, so the point was that let's follow one guideline, knowing that we, MHP is a credible organization, we follow the county rent guidelines, we keep rents reasonable, and so that's why we want to go with just the voluntary rent guidelines, and we will keep the rents, we will not raise rents unconsciously, like maybe some other people will do.
Yes, I understand that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight and staying so late, Mr. Harris. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
I just have one question, and I also really highly regard MHP. I've been able to tour the buildings you have here, and I thank you very much for the work you have done in the community. Just given, as my colleagues have mentioned, the context in which we're in right now with the issue at Hampshire Towers and how renters are feeling, when you met with the renters and the tenant association, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is right now they don't need to report their incomes, and moving forward, if you were taken out of rent stabilization, then they would have to become income qualified and report their incomes.
Correct.
Just making sure the residents understand that, and they're provided with that information.
They will be, and I, I brought that up to them two days ago, that, the group that, you know, it's, it's because of the financing we have that they would have to income qualify. Well, they have to do income, yeah, so they, they know it sometimes, it's hard initially, but they just, we make it very easy for them, we don't use that against them, but it's just the requirement of our, our financing.
Right. Thank you, and I appreciate you talking to them about it already, because I think there's a lot of people very nervous these days.
Right.
And, and this goes to, I guess, the city staff, just to follow on what my colleagues have said, I think there are a number of things when we think about affordable housing in our community. One is actually, as Councilmember Grimes has mentioned, is reviewing potential changes to our city code. Councilmember Mail has talked about this. I think there's a lack of understanding, and I think even some of us up here could probably use a better handle and understanding on when we're talking about affordable housing, what are we talking about, what do we have in the city, and that leads to us setting priorities and goals for the future. And I'm glad to hear the county is moving forward with the study and doing some work, but I think we need to carve out some time in the near future to really spend time here discussing this issue. Thank you.
Okay, I just, I just want to say, I definitely have a strong appreciation for all of the good work that Montgomery Housing Partnership has done in the city for a number of years now, and some, some great projects that you've undertaken, and it's also a pleasure to serve with Rob Goldman, president of MHP, on the Maryland Sustainable Growth Commission.
Yeah, where is he?
So I get to, I get to see him every other month, all around the state, as we grapple with sustainable growth issues.
Well, thank you. He would love to have been, you know, Rob is a workaholic, and I think this is Columbus that we do have off today, so he took that one day off, and, and I think he and his family are going, are out of town. Thank you.
Good. Okay, so we're ready for the, what we need to do next week. Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate your time, and I love this community, so it's a pleasure for me to come, talk about MHP, and also to be in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we don't have any other items this evening, so we're adjourned.